Next on the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the fire of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on the agenda is Rules of Order. We follow, we adopt rules of order every fall at our organizational meeting. We follow Robert's Rules of Order, and we'll conduct the meeting accordingly. Agenda item number four, adoption of the Elsworth City Council minutes from the following meeting, September 15th, 2025, regular meeting. I have a motion from the council regarding the minutes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Is there a way to turn up the microphone?
I guess maybe just speak a little closer in to him. How's that?
Better?
Can IT work on that somehow?
Yeah, I'm sure Jason's listening right now, and he'll get to it.
Okay. Seeing no comments on the agenda. All those in favor? Thank you. Item number five, presentation of awards. We have three awards to present tonight.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Is that better?
Yes.
The sound?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
The City of Elsworth proudly presents this certificate of service to Kelly Genkos. In recognition of 20 years of service to the Elsworth Public Library, your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the City of Elsworth. Presented this 20th day of October, 2025. Is Kelly here? Well, thank you, Kelly. Virginia Ginny Derice. City of Elsworth proudly presents this certificate of service in recognition of 25 years of service to the tax office as deputy tax clerk. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the City of Elsworth. Ginny, Ginny's not here? All right, well, thank you very much, Ginny.
Yay, Ginny!
I suspect the next one may be here. City of Elsworth proudly presents this certificate of service to Richard Fortier in recognition of 50 years of service in the fire department. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the City of Elsworth. Thank you. Captain Fortier, can I have your wife come up also, please?
Yes.
I'll just make this brief because Captain Fortier doesn't like pomp and circumstance. So I'll make this really brief. It is with profound mix of gratitude and admiration that we announce the retirement of Captain Richard Fortier from the Elsworth Fire Department effective today, October 20th, 2025. Pardon. Captain Fortier's dedicated tenure began on October 1st, 1975. And his retirement marks an extraordinary personal milestone. 50 years of service to the City of Elsworth. Captain Fortier's retirement is significant not only for his half-century of personal commitment, but also brings an end to a remarkable, unbroken legacy of the Fortier family serving the Elsworth Fire Department for over a century. The Fortier name, from the great-grandparents down through the generations, to include Captain Fortier's brothers, have been inextricably woven into the history and the identity of this fire department, protecting generations of Elsworth residents. In closing, we must acknowledge that while all firefighters understand the risk we sign up for, the ability to serve successfully depends entirely on the support and sacrifices made by our families at home. Therefore, we extend a special and heartfelt thank you to Mrs. Joyce Fortier for the unwavering support she has given her husband throughout his five decades of service to the city. Her sacrifices and understanding have been crucial in allowing Captain Fortier to dedicate himself to fully, fully to his duty. As a department and as a city, we extend our most sincere and heartfelt thank you to Captain Richard Fortier and the entire Fortier family for their collective and exceptional service. We wish Captain Fortier and Mrs. Fortier a long, happy, well-deserved retirement. We'd like to present to this class in recognition of your years of service to the Elsworth Fire Department.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Joyce, this is for you. You're welcome. We appreciate everything that you guys have done. Welcome. This is also yours.
And that, too?
That, too. Thank you. Ears are measured differently.
Onto agenda item number six. Got a tough act to follow there, Charlie. The city manager's report, please.
Yeah, I'm going to be very brief first. Just, you know, huge, huge thanks to Captain Fortier and the entire Fortier family. It's one of the things I noticed when I first interviewed for this job on just how special this city is, is that sort of longstanding, multi-generational commitment to service and to community and to boards. And, you know, I think, gosh, maybe a year ago, a little less than then, we've celebrated another one of these. I'm celebrating with sadness, too, for a police officer. I think it was 40 years. Might have been 50 for Officer Erlenbach. And, you know, and all the amazing work that he had done for our police service. And now his son Roddy is working as our Parks and Rec Director. Sort of this longstanding, multi-generational commitment to service in cities is something I don't think happens too often in American cities anymore. It's something so special and dear. You know, who will be the next Forty A's and Erlenbachs to step up? A whole lot, a lot of people in this council. We have so many amazing people on our boards and commissions in the community out here that I think that's the kind of secret sauce to Elsworth, is coming together as a community to solve tough issues and tackle big problems. We talked about that last time around in my city manager's report when we dedicated two new public service awards to the former city manager and former chair of the council, Michelle Beal, and former deputy city manager and city councillor, Tammy Moat, for two awards that we'll be giving every year for the public servants who exhibit the highest levels of leadership and excellence in the city and really just go above and beyond, which happens all over this place. It was a very hard decision to give those to Tina and to Nate from our two departments. I'm sorry, John. I, you know, if you come back and you work for the city for 15, 20 years, I think I would allow that, plus your council service, to do the Stein Award. There could be some other pieces, but I want to keep my city manager comment report brief because we have a big agenda tonight. But did want to just thank you, John. I know this is your last council meeting as well. And while we might not be naming award in perpetuity, your presence, your thoughts, your efforts will be with us. I know your sort of dedication to service and to nonprofits and to causes that, you know, are really part of the fabric of the community and government's role in helping foster that. I know you and I have been on different sides of those a few times. We've had lots of long conversations. I know I, my personal perspective on those policies and who we support and how we support them and the value of those organizations to the city to thrive has changed. I know for many in the council, they probably say the same thing, I think. And then there's another piece where you just, you work a problem and are a huge value to the staff. I can't tell you how much the staff, when they see a council agenda item sponsored by John Stein, they know that they're going to have somebody who's collaborating to help them, who's going to help write the memos to get it on here, that, you know, in a very overworked staff that's just, you know, has had enormously difficult jobs, like to know that you're there to support them and to help them even on the things that you matter most. It's been just a pleasure to work with you.
Thanks, Charlie. Sure.
That's it?
Okay. Short and sweet. Next up, we have agenda item number seven, committee reports. Are there any committees looking for it out? Councillor Smith?
Thank you. I can just report on to, I think, to the point of the value of volunteers that we heard from the city manager just now. Cemetery Commission is meeting regularly to address priority items. They meet, I think, bi-weekly at this point to get caught up on some things. And the Historic Preservation Commission will have their next meeting October 28th. They are looking for new members, and they'll also be updating the bylaws to ensure compliance with current standards.
Great. Thank you, Councillor Smith. Any other councillors?
To report on the Arbor Commission. Over the past month, we have been focusing on training outreach and preparing for the fall tree plantings that we're going to be doing. So we had a hands-on, or two hands-on training events for the Parks and Recreation Crew, a pruning workshop and a planting workshop led by staff from the City of Bangor as part of the Project Canada Grant Deliverables that the Arbor Commission got. And these were a great opportunity to build skills and share best practices and also strengthen our regional partnerships with Bangor. Some of you in the room may have received letters over the past week. If you live on Foster or Washington Street, we're going to be doing right-of-way plantings on those streets there. Over the next two weeks, we'll be preparing. And then the planting event will actually take place the first week of November. So we encourage any residents on those streets to reach out to us at the Arbor Commission. The email is arborcommission@elsworthmain.gov. And our goal is to work closely with the community to make sure that these projects meet neighborhood needs and bring beauty and shade to our public areas. We really want to make sure we have the community buy-in on Foster and Washington Street. And then, over the past month, we, the Arbor Commission and the Parks and Recreation Department went to the UMaine Forestry Job Fair, where we promoted Elsworth's urban forestry, summer internship program. And we've also started receiving applicants for next year's positions. So it went really well. And it's a great sign for things to come for trees in Elsworth. That's it.
Great. Thank you, Councillor White. Thanks for all those efforts. Any other committees? Councillor Stein?
Yeah, I met with a very, very ad hoc reformation of the connectivity or the broadband committee. So that was the Elsworth manager, Charlie, deputy manager, IT and economic development office. We met with Simon Thorne at Phidium Fiber. This is an ongoing issue around the Graham Lake area, specifically North Street and Graham Way, who, that area has been without high-speed connectivity for a while. So the good news is that they let us know that there's a new round of BEAD funding coming out, and that area is on the list. There's a couple specific dots on the map, so to speak, where they are obligated to run connectivity. These dots are all at the ends of the street. So for example, if you look at the map, which I'll give you the website address for in a second, at the very end of Graham Way, there's two properties that are mandatory for Phidium to come and install fiber. They told us that because they install at the very end of a lane, they will also provide connectivity because it makes sense for them as a business. If they have to go to the end of the street, they will also provide connectivity. So that, we believe, will cover all of the areas in issue that have been an issue. So the less good news is that the timeline is still pretty nebulous. They're waiting on BEAD funding, then they're waiting to create the maps of who takes precedent with that installation. They would have a better idea in 2026 about the timeline. They said it could be as early as June 2026. It could be as late as the end of 2027. Hopefully, it wouldn't be too much longer than that. But Charlie is on it, so I'm very happy to be leaving the council with at least a clear way forward. And our manager will have another few meetings with them to make sure that we're top of mind as they continue. So reach out if you have any questions about that. Looks like we're on the right track. And visit mainconnectivity.org/BEAD. That's B-E-A-D. You could see a map of all the areas. They wouldn't send us their internal maps, but this one is almost as good. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Councillor Stein. Anyone else? Okay. Hearing none. We're on to agenda item number eight, citizens' comments. It's an opportunity for citizens to provide comments on issues that are relevant to the city's business and are not on tonight's agenda. If you're here for a matter on tonight's agenda, you'll have an opportunity to speak to it when we get to that type of time in the agenda. Also a reminder that this is not a time for politicking or campaigning, especially considering that early voting is going on here at City Hall. But with that, if there's any citizens that would like to come to the podium, please state your name. And you have three minutes. Excuse me.
I hope I can get this all within three minutes. I have sent several notices, several emails to the city manager, Charlie Pierce, regarding a problem we're having on North Street with rats, and I have not gotten a response from him. So I want to read to the city council the email I mailed him. Says, "Charlie, I don't know if you received my email, so I am resending it. I live at 69 North Street and have for 40 years. Never in all that time have I had rats in my home. That is, until the last four years. My rat infestation is due to the people who live and have lived at 66 North Street, directly across the street. I've spent a small fortune on rat traps and poison. I'm fighting a losing battle. I did some research. A pair of rats can produce up to 2,000 offspring in a year's time." That's frightening, isn't it? "I purchased this house 40 years ago. It had been gutted by fire, and I tore out all the burned debris by myself. No, I didn't hire a company. I did it myself. I hired a plumber for the plumbing and an electrician for the wiring. The rest of the rebuild, I did all by myself while working a full-time job and raising two sons. It's heartbreaking to see all the hard work I put into this place destroyed by rats. I have clean..." I can't say her name. "The neighbors hoard up several times over the years, both inside and outside the house. Two years ago, one of my grandsons helped me in the middle of the winter to re-bag 42 contractors' bags of trash off her porch. We put it roadside, and I paid for the trash tickets myself just to get rid of it. Last winter, her son moved his mother into the one-bedroom apartment with him and rented out her house, as well as the garage apartment, to druggies and drug dealers. Last winter, after the owner was put in a nursing home due to her son's neglecting to get her adequate help, there was a fire in the kitchen, and the fire department condemned the house, but not the adjoining apartment he and his mother had been living in. After the fire, the hydro pulled the water, pulled the meter, and he went down in the basement and bypassed where the meter was and wired direct into the power grid. After five months and numerous phone calls, the hydro checked it out and realized what he had done. They disconnected the line from the pole, so it has no electricity. The water shut off last spring due to a broken pipe underground between the house and the garage. He's living in an apartment with no water, no heat, and no bathroom facilities. Where's the human waste going? The neighbors have picked up numerous needles from the roadside. The Joneses have three sons, and they can't let the boys out to play or their dogs out either before they have to thoroughly search the property for needles. These needles are coming from the druggies at 66 North Street. Joe himself has hepatitis B and C. If one of those children gets stuck by one of those needles carelessly discarded, there's going to be hell to pay. I'm going to tell you right now. The garbage on both porches, on the ground beneath the porches and in front of the garage is disgusting. On hot days, I could not open my doors or the windows because of the stench. I'm going to try to attach, which I did. I attached photos and sent them to them."
Ms. Garland, it's been three minutes. Could you conclude your comments, please?
It's right here. I'm at the end right now. "We need the city's assistance in assuring the trash gets taken care of. Some paper inside the appointment apartment lists REO Management Solutions LLC with an address of 5552 West Suite 105, Houston, Texas, 77069, is the owner's. Their phone number is 866-503-5559. Could the city possibly contact REO Management Solutions and demand, as property owners, they clean up the trash from the property or face fines?" This is a public health problem. I mean, I have asthma. I can't be near rat droppings or mouse droppings. I'm hearing rats chewing in my ceiling over my bed while I'm sleeping. I have friends over for lunch, and they have to leave because the sound of the rats chewing in my walls is awful. I've never had this problem before. I'm just asking for some help and getting hold of these people that own this property and demanding that they clean it up. It's horrible. I sent Charlie Pierce and the code enforcement officer pictures of the property over there and how disgusting it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
My name's Kevin Mini. I live at 217 Sergeant Drive. I just have three questions. Obviously, we have a stenographer here. After my three questions, I'd like a written response from the city council on this. Obviously, this is a serious tax issue problem that we're having. Taxes went up $1,000 on my property just alone. So my first question is, when did the City of Elsworth conduct a townwide evaluation for the residents and the properties? What dates did this happen? As far as my knowledge is, it hasn't been within the last 10 years. Second of all, how did the tax assessor come up with a figure of 31% taxes increase on waterfront property only and not residents citywide? Waterfront property, the city has no services. I live on Branch Lake. No sewer, no water, no trash, no city services. My question to the city council is, how do you come up with this number? We've talked to the tax assessor. We got a roundabout answer. If you look at it, you do some research, you look at a case law by Donald Patron versus the town of Scarborough. Scarborough had the same issue where they increased the taxes on waterfront property only. The city lost the case because it was discrimination and unjust for people that own properties on waterfront. My third question is your financial report. You look at it, the date is June 30th of 2024. Why does it take a year to get a standing from your audit one year later to write a report through the findings? If you look at the findings on his statements, his quotes are, states material weakness, insufficient deficiencies. Why is this? You have a year to do the tax report or do your finances, and it takes a year. Why is that? Second of all, I started going through your cash accounts with your city water and waste management. I know you have companies coming out as far as Old Town dumping waste at our treatment plant. So how does the cash value work on this? Other than that, those are the three questions I'd like to have a written response to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Cynthia Brown, and I live on 173 Sergeant Drive in Elsworth. I live on Branch Lake. I've lived there for quite some time now, and I'm really very concerned about what's going on. My taxes have gone up 18% this year. I live on a fixed income. This was supposed to be my retirement home. I don't have a husband. I'm a widow. I live there by myself. I'm responsible for everything. I have, yes, I have waterfront property. It is not usable. It is all rocks except for 10 feet, and we have to have a dock so that the grandchildren can get in the water. Why am I being taxed that much money? Every single person on that street that lives there year-round is elderly. They're all on fixed incomes. It's very, very disheartening to know or to feel like we're getting pushed out of our homes because that's what it's going to come down to. Because I have a budget. I have a budget of $200 a month for groceries, for food, and my taxes went up 18%. So that tells me that the City of Elsworth does not give two hoots about the elderly or the people that have lived here long-term. And it's really very disheartening because, yeah, we live in a beautiful place, like Kevin says. We don't have any children on the street. There's no school bus that will come down there. We don't have trash pickup. No, we don't. We have to beg for them to come to sand us, and then we have to pay for it. We have to beg for them to come to sand us and then we have to pay for it. So is that going to change with these tax increases? Because it really, I'm having a hard time, not really, not saying what I really want to say. It just, it just doesn't feel right. And Justin, I want to know, did everybody's taxes in the whole city go up 18%? Or did some go up 2% and some go up 20%? I'd like to know that because I don't think it was consistent because you'd have more people in this room talking about the taxes. I think, this is just my guess, I don't know this, but I think it's punishment for the lakeside people. Now, they're not all from away. They're people that have lived here for a long, long time and we are getting pushed out. And my heart is broken. That was supposed to be where I was going to stay till I died. And I don't feel like I can. I'm going to have to make a decision. And you know what? They valued my house more than Zillow valued it. Now, you know, you all know that anyone who knows Zillow knows they inflate their assessments, right? I mean, they do because they want to entice you to get, to send your, I mean, to put your house on the market. Well, if I could get what they have evaluated my house when they saw it, I have less than 900 square feet. I don't know what else I can say, but I am very distraught about this. I'm very anxious about it. And I would like to see if somebody gave two hoots about the elderly people in this community. You know, or maybe I'll set up a GoFundMe page so I can stay in my own home. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I thought the comments were going to come up per topic. So I have two things to speak about and one is about.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Rebecca Maddox-Wilber, formerly a citizen of Ellsworth Falls, but we lost Ellsworth Falls when I was a child, but I still remember it and that's where I live. I read with great alarm the consideration of outsourcing tax assessing here in Ellsworth.
Ma'am, that matter is on the agenda tonight?
So we commented that time?
Yes, please.
Okay, I was unclear. It seemed like everyone was just going to. All right, I will be back.
Thank you very much.
Wasn't there another subject that you wanted to talk about as well?
Well, I could.
If it's not on.
It's not just the elderly. I'm still Rebecca Maddox-Wilber. It's not just the elderly that face difficulty with the taxes. I have no issue with Larry Gardner. He's been wonderful with me when the beavers dammed up the Shackford's Brook and I lost 19 acres to swampland. He took that off. You know, that's obviously not house law. Everything that I had was considered a house lot, even though I had no interest in a development. My taxes are very high and I'm a widow and I am not eligible for my husband's Social Security and I work seven days a week and I have for a long time. And I should not, given that I bought the property the same, well, within a month of graduating from college, and that was a long time ago, I shouldn't at this stage of my life have my property potentially in jeopardy because of the ever-increasing taxes. I have my own well. I have my own septic. I plow my own driveway. When I had a brain aneurysm, I had my daughter drive me to the hospital because the chances of an ambulance finding me on our location in a timely fashion was nil. And the kind of aneurysm I had is a 2% survival rate. So I'm glad my daughter brought me because I'm sure I wouldn't have gotten the ambulance to me in time. So anyways, the taxation issue is a concern and I'm also a school teacher, by the way, so I recognize that a huge portion of that is for our school budget. But I can assure you that I spend a lot of my meager wages on things that the school budget can't even cover. And I am probably the most irritating person in the entire school in my frugality and I will not let things get thrown away that people don't want because somebody's tax dollars paid for them. So I work very, very hard to be as fiscally responsible as I can be. However, I feel like I have zero control over what's going to happen to the property that I own and worked very hard for as a 23-year-old just out of college. At 64, I really don't feel like I should be having to worry about this. And I not only worry about it, for me, I worry about it for my children because barring losing it, that's the only thing I really have to give them and I want to be able to do that. So I just, I echo what the lady ahead of me said, but it is not just the elderly that struggle with this. I have five children, 23, 25, 33, 35, 37. Three of them have been able to buy houses. One of them sold their house when they finished college and have made offers on numerous houses around here, but they can't afford anything. Valuations are outrageous. I don't even agree with my own. You know, it's like square footage-wise, okay. My house was falling down around me. My husband was sick for 21 years. So there's a lot of questions and I do not think there's any chance in God's creation on this next subject that outsourcing taxation assessment is going to help. We'll be back for that.
Thank you.
I cannot do that. Because I'm old. Anyway, it'll only take a couple of seconds. Well, no, I can't talk for three minutes. I can't even talk. I just want to say, I do, I live on Sergeant Drive. Kevin is my son. And I just want to say, my parents bought their property in 56 and they built their house by hand, built it to have a retirement home, which they did. But now with the taxes going up and up and up and up, I don't know how we're going to keep any of it. I thank God my parents aren't here to see what's happened because that was their homestead and the pride of their life. And I built my house across the street so I could take care of them, which I did. And now that's going up too. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, what was your name for the record?
Oh, Kay Flannigan. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Seeing no more, we'll move on to councillor comments. Any councillors that would like to make comments this evening? Councillor Hallerman.
I want to thank everybody for having the courage to come up and speak at that podium. I realize that it's not everybody's comfort to speak in public. And I also realize that there's festering issues in many people's minds that aren't willing to take a chance and come to that podium and speak. One unpopular subject that I would like to comment is this. The growth of Ellsworth government is driving the cost. I'm not saying that it's the only cost, but the growth of our government is out of control, way out of control. We've gone from one city manager to one city manager, one deputy city manager, and now a consultant city manager. That's three. That's just one example. There is so much growth going on in our government that I feel is unnecessary. And I think it contributes to some of these subjects that we're talking about tonight. On a lighter note, I heard a great story about an Ellsworth police officer. A family got into a vehicle deer accident and they called the police. And an Ellsworth police officer came and there was a seven-year-old girl in the car. The girl was quite upset. Number one, we just hit Bambi. And number two, we have blue lights. Mom was driving. She was a little bit rattled. There's a deer laying in the road. And an Ellsworth police officer shows up and recognized the fear in the little seven-year-old girl and put her at ease by talking to her and talking to mom and making everything the very best it could be with a smile on his face and really lightened the mood for the entire situation. The car was unregistered by less than 30 days and didn't make any issues, certainly asked that they register it, but really went the extra mile for this family and this seven-year-old girl that was very frightened. And I'd just like to say thank you for that.
Any other councillors' comments this evening?
I would.
Councillor White?
This is my first councillor comments after being here for, this is my 12th city council meeting, so. One year. It doesn't get any easier up here speaking to you and to everyone watching online. But I just wanted to, there's, I just wanted to recognize some of the great work that the city is doing right now. Last week, I needed to go to Feed and Seed to get a bunch of straw and I happened to see our highway crew excavator up there working on the new courthouse road. And we're making super strong progress there. It was Tuesday that they started last week and by Thursday, when I visited, they had done a substantial amount of work there. And to make matters even better, we aren't, because we don't have rain, which is a bummer for our forests and gardens right now, it's actually really great for the roadwork that they're doing over there because we aren't having to deal with water issues slowing us down and becoming an environmental issue. Not only were they doing incredible work, but they're, they were upbeat and they were proud of the work that they were doing and that makes me very happy to see. And I also joined the Parks and Recreation Department and the Planning Department last Friday at the City Forest Cleanup, where we all volunteered our time with also professional volunteers that came together. We cleared trails and we cleared boundary lines all out of, I believe most of us were there outside of being paid. So, and then watching the city staff and the volunteers work together to get such enormous amounts of work done was also incredibly exciting and I'm super excited to see what's in store for the city forests, for us. And these are the things that I see as well as the people in this room that I, some that I know very well, that I know reach out and help people that are in need. These are the moments and the people that remind me that what makes Ellsworth so special. We all care. We show up and we work together for the good of our community, especially when it's expensive to make sure our community runs, coming together as volunteers is really, really meaningful work. It's really important right now, I think, that we remember the good of the community. In recent weeks, a lot of city employees have faced some harassment and not many to nothing that they had done themselves. And as a former city worker myself, I know how tough it is to work in a city job. It can be very thankless. There can be very little positive comments that come in, even though they're doing incredibly important and incredibly hard work on a day-to-day basis. So I want to remember that although we may not always agree, that it is really important to, we should always be kind to each other. We are neighbors. We share the same roads, the same parks, the same schools, the same grocery stores, and we share the same hopes for Ellsworth. And when we lead with empathy instead of division, a community can grow stronger. And I believe in an Ellsworth that can do anything that we put our mind to. So thank you for voting me in a year ago and thanks for listening to me. And yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Councillor White.
Thank you.
Any other councillors, councillor comments? Councillor Stein?
Yeah. I have some similar things to say. We did not collaborate, though.
No, we didn't.
I want to echo Steve. Thank you all for getting up and speaking. I also know it's not easy and it informs a lot of what this council takes on, hearing from you, oftentimes issues that we don't know exist and then we dive into because that's what our role is here. So thank you. I'm incredibly honored to have been your councillor these past three years. It's been a difficult job. I've learned so much and have been often humbled, especially in my first year, made a lot of mistakes and was taught very quickly by people. It's been amazing to work alongside these great people up here and city staffers as well, such a wide array of skills and creative ideas. Most of the issues we dealt with over the past few years have been quite complex and I think that's just part of the job. Very, very occasionally do we see issues that have a clear right or wrong or a clear yes or no. Even when the choice seems obvious ethically, there's a yes, we need to do this, there's still, in that case, legal and bureaucratic hurdles to jump to make these things happen. Building new things and changing the way that municipal government works can be really, really slow and involves a lot of teamwork. City staffers, management input from public citizens, councillors, the job takes a lot of creative work and collaboration and patience and empathy, like councillor White said. It's been exciting to work alongside these councillors as they draw from a wealth spring of experience like Tammy's encyclopedic financial wisdom and Michelle's leadership and institutional knowledge. We have three new seats up for election this November and I just want to share a little bit about what I've learned in this position in light of that. There's some housekeeping. There's the yearly budget, which we were excited that we got it down to less than 3% increase over last year, which is around inflation. Now, I'm rethinking everything, having heard that that is not equal across all parts of the city and that is something that the next councillor, council is going to have to address and figure out. And I believe that hopefully starting tonight already with talks of the Assessment Department and we'll see where that goes. There's approval of business licenses. There's things like that. We councillors often have some personal interests we want to see through as well, urban restoration, reforestation, adult-use cannabis ordinance, support of social services. Those were some of my interests when I started. Other than that, we base our actions on what we hear from you all, the citizens of Ellsworth. And it's our job to listen as you tell us and sometimes with well-founded frustration and sometimes with shouting, what your grievances are. And it's our job then to try to fix them. My belief is that the best way to do this job is by working with others. And when I got elected to be up at this table, it was no longer my job to shout about grievances, to make a spectacle, to say, you all need to fix this. You know, when we're up here at these seats, when we make accusations or generalizations without context, they can and they have, and they have recently resulted in harassment of our city staff, which is unacceptable. Up here at this table, it's our job to work to try to fix these issues, to work with you all and the staff and with the support of the staff to get things done. When we're doing our job right, we slowly, unfortunately slowly, that's how things work, and steadily get things done. We do the research, the work. We work with each other. We compromise. We see what's possible. We pose reasonable agenda items and then try to get things passed. When we're doing our job right, we balance the needs of the people and the different parts of the city against one another to come up with a fair solution or as fair as we can. And we do so, we hope, without making a scene or without needing to get in the paper. So I want to remind the voters to beware of anyone running for the seat on dogma alone. Beware of general statements. What we strive for starts with a notion. It can be general, but it has to turn into something specific, actions. Spend no money. Obviously, we don't want to have our taxes increase, but it's not necessarily a platform for a councillor. Yes, we all want to pay less in taxes. Yes, we all want to see improvements, build potholes, less homelessness, less traffic, less tax, right? More improvement. This is the great paradox of our civilization. That's why this job is hard because we have to balance both. Beware the candidate looking for just a larger pulpit for their opinions or an ideologue banging his fist on the table and refusing to compromise. Beware the candidate who is just asking questions. Anyone who is ready to give a pithy newspaper quote but unwilling to put in the tedious and often boring work of getting things done. On a happier note, I just want to reiterate that despite some difficulties, it really has been an honor and a pleasure. And national politics seem to be getting increasingly divisive and seem to push us apart, but working with all of you and everyone up here for the betterment of Ellsworth, even though we sometimes have different thoughts on how to do that and what that looks like, reminds me that there's so much more that unites a community like ours than divides us and that we are neighbors and that we help each other. And I have confidence that this council will continue to move Ellsworth forward in that direction. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Stein. Councillor Moat?
So because I'm a numbers girl, I just did a calculation and I spent 42% of my life working for the city in one capacity or another. So it's been an honor serving everyone, working with this council. I want to thank the staff because it is a thankless job. When I first started, Michelle Beal told me, she said, you're in a fishbowl. Everyone sees what you're doing. Not everyone has all the information. So I just want to thank the staff. Keep your heads up. It's hard. It's hard being a city employee. It's hard being a city councillor, but it's been a privilege and I want to thank the city manager, the staff, the council, and to my family. Because you know what? There were many, many nights that I missed family events because I was here, whether I was an employee or I was on the council. You know, the phone calls that took place during dinner and it's just, it's been a pleasure. So thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate it. I hate speaking in public.
Well, councillor Smith, do you have a comment?
I have nothing dazzling. I had pragmatic, from listening to the conversations earlier, as I did last month, encourage people who are struggling with property taxes, have you signed up for the homestead exemption? I think there are extra programs for seniors. And to the city manager, as we are designing workshops into the future, I love that between Steve and I, apparently we came up with this model of council meetings alternating with the workshops that are freer. But again, whether it's in that setting or written, something that explains how the property tax works, I'm happy to contribute to that. With the reality of valuations going up and that the way that the system is designed is that the property taxes reflect the valuation. And also noting that at the state level, there's a stakeholder group that I'm tracking that is dealing with the problem of property taxes. This is across the state and it is because the valuations are increasing as more people choose to live in Maine. And so they are legitimate concerns. We hear them regularly. We live them as taxpayers as well. And anything we can do, again, to continue to get the information. as well, and, um, anything we can do, again, to continue to get the information out about how this comes about, I think is going to be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Uh, excuse me, a gentleman in the back, if he could please, um, be quiet while the council is speaking, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you. Um, well-
He's talking to the baritones in the back.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you guys-
He tells us how to whisper.
Thank you. Um, well, I guess I'll provide comments then, I don't want to be left out. My comments are, "Thank you. Um, thank you to John Stein, Tammy Moat, and Michelle Beal for your service on the Ellsworth City Council these past three years. It's been a true honor to serve with you and I have learned a great deal from you all. John, you've shown me we are here to serve everyone in our community, especially those in need, and to always listen with your heart. Tammy, your diligent and highly capable work supporting Ellsworth exhibited that actions speak louder than words. Thank you for your steady support of the city, and thank you for laughing at my bad jokes." Michelle, if she were here, I'd, I'd just say, "Michelle, you led the council with grace, strength, and empathy. Thank you for your mentorship and support. There's often disagreement on how best to address the important issues before the city council, but in navigating disagreement, the three of you treated everyone, city staff, fellow counselors, and citizens with respect and dignity and worked to find compromise. You are models for civic leaders that we should all strive for. Thank you for your service to your community." We will now move on to the unfinished business portion of the agenda. Council Order 092508, Public Hearing, Potential Action on Proposed Ordinance to Provide For and Regulate the Annual Issuance of Local Licenses for, thank you for coming, for local licenses for adult-use cannabis establishments and amendments to the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinance, Chapter 14, Licenses and Permits to Add Related Licensing Fees and Verbiage for the Proposed Ordinance. And after all that, I don't think we have much to say, Councilor, or, uh, Manager Pierce, but, uh, if you want to take it over there.
Yeah, it's a recommended table on this one. We've had, um, some pressing legal issues, most specifically the Crask, or the, um, was it 16 Fifth Street, that were extraordinarily time-consuming for all staff and for our legal teams. Um, so unfortunately, when something like that comes to the fore, uh, and it involves, uh, you know, a pressing issue, we have to push some things back. There's, it's a zero-sum game, we're all working a ton of hours around here, um, so unfortunately, we're going to have to push that back to the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you for the update. Do I have a motion to table?
Move to table. Second.
All in favor? Thank you, so moved. Consent Agenda. All items on the Consent Agenda considered to be routine will be enacted in one motion. Number 11, Public Hearing and Action on the Applications for Renewal for the Following Hain Yi, DBA China Hill Restaurant, 301 High Street, for renewal of a City Class B License Victular Liquor and Amusement and Renewal of a State Restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, and 4 Malt Spiritus Venice Liquor License. Ellsworth Marketplace, 110 Down East Highway, for renewal of a Class C License Victular and Liquor, the renewal of a, of a State Off-Premise Bar and Wine License. And Kalahar LLC DBA Smokey Bear Tobacco and Beverage, 139 High Street, for renewal of City Liquor License and Estate Off-Premise Beer and Wine License. How would the council like to proceed? I'm going to miss you. Uh, this is now a public hearing. If anyone would like to, uh, comment, uh, on any of the licensees we've just announced, please approach the lectern. Seeing none, I will, oh.
Maybe that's after, for, I think we might have a business owner here.
Oh, okay, yeah, if there's-
Okay, that's next.
Okay.
Sorry. We'll miss you, Tammy.
Uh, yeah, just listen to Tammy. Um, I'll close the public hearing. How would the council like to proceed?
All in good standing, et cetera? Move to approve all as stated.
Second.
All in favor? All right, excellent. On to Agenda Item, New Business, Guru Ellsworth Inc., DBA Cilantro Indian Bistro, 200 High Street, for a new City Class C License Victular and Liquor and a new State Restaurant On-Premise Beer, Wine, and Spirits License. It's my understanding we may have the, um, new business owner here. Um, I'll open the public hearing, if anyone would like to come speak, but we'd love to hear from the new owner, if they have anything they'd like to say.
Coming.
Hi. So, we have a new restaurant here, uh, Cilantro Indian Bistro. There is a new venture here. Uh, we've been business for like five years for the restaurant, and we have, we have been like serving you, we have a best wishes to give you all the test, that's what we like to do that. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much for coming. Any other members of the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. How would the council like to proceed?
Move to approve the business license for Guru Ellsworth, DBA Cilantro Indian Bistro.
Second.
All those in favor? Congratulations.
And welcome.
And welcome. Agenda Item Number 12, Council Order 102500, Presentation from Arthur Langley from Living History Heritage on Ellsworth Living History Days, an event planned for 2026 sponsored by Counselor O'Halloran.
As he said, I'm Arthur Langley, and in defense of our dear friend Brian Langley and his wife Jane, I want to defend his reputation, we are not related. So, please excuse, uh, for me, my behavior, but it doesn't reflect on Brian. First and foremost, uh, I thank the council. You are what we, the people, ask to represent us. It's a very difficult job and I thank you for the opportunity to be here. Steve, thank you for, uh, inviting me here. Uh, you've sent out an email to a few people and staff, and I want to thank Charlie for your kind words and reply to that email, and I want to compliment city staff, Ebony and a few others who were very, very kind and helpful in this process. I didn't know about the opportunity for a screen, uh, but I will say, please stop me because I will, at some point, talk much too long. So, Living History Heritage is a quite young entity. I passed out maps to you to put some context in it. The lighter colored map is from the 1497, and you can see above that sailing vessel, sorry, the rest of you can't see this, it's absolutely vast, and they trust me. If you've been through Camden, there's a bed and breakfast there called Norumbega, and that's what that land is called, Terran Norumbega, and I won't get into it with that all means, but that's Maine. That's what you're looking at there, that's Maine. And the next map is, uh, a map from, uh, mid 1500s, but you will see an awful lot of it, uh, of both of them, there's nothing there. And, uh, some of the old maps, uh, from world history talk about terra incognito, unknown lands. Well, they weren't unknown lands to people who lived here for thousands and thousands and thousands of years. Um, I wasn't brilliant in math, but I know that 500 is a lot smaller than 10 or 15,000. We have wonderful, rich cultures here, uh, in this region, the five great Wabanaki nations, the Abenaki, the Micmac, uh, the Pasimquadi, Penobscot, and Wollustico, commonly called Malacite. These nations are thousands of years old here, and they were right here. Uh, the very earliest French explorers in the, like, 1604, you may have heard of Champagne or, uh, Dumont, Mont, Dessert, um, they called Ellsworth Concord because the tribal nations, this was a dividing line pretty much between the Penobscot Nation and the Pasimquadi Nation, and they got along peacefully, so they called it a place of Concord, uh, which is a European, uh, I certainly am of European ancestry, I'm French, English, Irish, and Scottish. When I'm alone in bed at night, I'm sleeping with the enemy. So, um, the Europeans were not used to community groups, tribal groups, villages getting along. And so, this was a wonderful thing that they found here. Uh, so, Living History Heritage started, I have a lifelong interest in history, I'm very blessed, and my mother is from Scotland, but she had a huge admiration for the tribal nations. I grew up with Hurons, now called Wendat, around the Algonquin Nation, the Great Lakes, and although my mother was, uh, from Scotland, born there, she was involved with a very big city museum, and she fought the board and said, "We've got Chinese galleries and Roman galleries and meteor galleries and armor and all kinds of things, and there's nothing here but the people who've lived here for almost ever." And she got the, this museum to change that. So, I grew up with, you know, a nice little home with, you know, pastoral pictures of cows from Scotland in a field and a tribal mask on the wall beside it, and a corn husk doll on the, on the little tiny mahogany table next to the cut crystal cigarette holder that had no cigarettes in it. She didn't smoke. Dad did not. Anyway, um, so, very recently, I staggered backwards into history and dragged my long-suffering wife Linda. Several years ago, I volunteered us to a group in Machias, uh, and I call wearing one of these being tricornish, not from Cornwall, just being, okay, no, I'm tricornish, um, and, uh, went there and they needed somebody to dress up in a, in a red regimental coat as this is Majesty's Marine. And I said, "That's fine, I served in a Queen's Regiment once when I lived in Canada years and years ago. I actually renounced a foreign prince when I became an American. He's now King of England." So, the, uh, we went and did that, and then July the 4th, I was a patriot in July the 4th parade and firing out muskets in the parade, and then on August, I was wearing a red coat again, so you can't trust me. I, I, I'm not sure which George I'm supporting at any time. We dealt, did, dealt with that, and then I discovered what they were doing never happened. There were never any red coats in Machias, and history is so precious and so important, uh, and it's so rich in this whole region, that tell, tell what happened. Uh, we had a wonderful experience earlier of this, this couple and their family who've served Ellsworth for 50 years. That's a fifth of the history of the United States. We're coming up on the 250th birthday of the Declaration of Independence. That couple has served Ellsworth for a fifth of the history of the United States. It's extraordinary. It's wonderful. But the history is much richer. So, we focus within Living History Heritage, I won't get into all the details, but we started in 2019, a tribal nation, Abenaki, a crater-given brother of mine, who's been in the, this living history world for almost 50 years. He was visiting, I was trying to get him to go to Machias and give them some coaching, and, uh, he looked out and said, "We ought to do something here." And the Empress said, "Yes, we should." So, the broom pusher agreed and, you know, we launched Living History, just in time for COVID. And, uh, so a couple of years later, uh, we had a dry run and we had 38 people in tricornish outfits, uh, and we didn't tell the public, we didn't tell schools, a school bus came anyway, they said, "Well, we heard about and we thought we'd come as an experiment." And this year, we had almost 300 students, uh, registered to participate. So, third, our weekends is four days, Thursday, Friday for schools in the morning, uh, homeschoolers in the public in the afternoon, and the public on weekends. And, uh, the kids have a wonderful time. We have some wonderful, I don't know if you saw any of the propaganda that I shared with Ebony that sent to you. Uh, one of the, uh, vice principals of one of the schools said, "I taught history for 15 years and now I'm in administration," and gesturing at all the kids and, and staff, she said, "We all learn stuff we never knew. That's very rewarding." We like to, uh, although it's commonly called reenacting, we like to talk about living historians, because the people that we most admire, that we're trying to learn from and involve in these events, have spent truly decades researching. They truly are historians and they live it. So, we try and be as accurate in, in everything, the life ways and sharing it. So, how did we come to be talking here to Ellsworth? Someone who actually worked with Brian Langley, quite a wonderful young, young lady, Jen Salak, had contacted us late, late last year, and then through her, talking to Mary Blackstone, and there, I didn't even tell you, there are wonderful stakeholder groups in Ellsworth. And, uh, we even ended up talking to, uh, the historical property, you know, here, and well, we discovered they didn't have enough parking for a large public event. Well, that's a problem. And, uh, when we're trying to do things, we focus on pre-post contact, so really 15 to 1600, early 1600s, the 1600s and the 1700s, and we arbitrarily say anything pre-1840, because that's when you went from a flintlock musket to a caplock. Little details, but caplocks, you had a little hammer, it's what they used in the Civil War. What we have is little rocks that make sparks. So, we say we're pre-1840, but we focus 1600s and 1700s. Uh, so, what we're looking for is locations that are not 19th century in look, not 20th century in look, not 21st, it's really hard. You don't want the grill of a Dodge in the background of a photograph when you're in period regalia for a Abenaki from 1590, uh, or a telephone pole or a wire to dumpster. So, uh, we were invited to look at various locations around Ellsworth, none of them really worked. Uh, we are talking to two private property owners just down the river on, on the Upper Bay, uh, who are very interested in hosting us in a large, open, natural environment on the water. Ellsworth exists because of the water. So does London, so does Moscow, so does Hong Kong. Uh, the water was the highways, the, the local roads and the local paths. Uh, I learned from one of our, uh, great historic, living historians, who has literally taught tribal nations across the country about their own cultures, that there was a wonderful route, well, three different routes, uh, you know, you would think, "Well, if you're a Penobscot coming here, you'd go down the Penobscot River, through Frenchlands Bay, come up, you know, Union Bay, Union River to Ellsworth." No, they came, came across, pass a dumb keg, can dust keg, and took one other into the upper watershed of the Union and came down. That was the, the trade and travel route. So, there's all kinds of wonderful, and, and now that we've talked to some of them who do guiding and trips, they're excited about recreating those routes that have not been travel routes for literally now 150 years, uh, and were for thousands of years. So, uh, I'm here really just to say, we, we are going ahead, we're doing this, again, we thought we'd be doing this one weekend, four days in Washington County Down East. Since last fall, we've heard from now 28 communities in Maine, three in New Hampshire, and four in New Brunswick, who are asking us to put on these living history weekends. We can't do half of that, but we're going to struggle through and do the best we can. So, this is a courtesy appearance to say, "This is what we're, we're working towards." Whenever we start one, it's going to be annual, and our, our objective is to provide edutainment, entertainment that educates, and, uh, the, for the participants and certainly, uh, for the, the public, whatever they are. Uh, so, we're not asking for any money, we feel that every, every community is spending too much money and, you know, nobody wants to pay. Our, our nation was founded on a bunch of people, remember John Hancock's big signature? He was the biggest- He was the biggest smuggler in North America and he hated paying taxes, like all smugglers. He was the first to sign huge. And our forefathers were shooting at their duly elected government when our taxes were 1%. Well, anyway, we'll skip over that part. So we're not here asking for money. We're not asking community groups for money. Our objective is to go to sponsors, raise money, donors, and fund this. Communities just don't, certainly not governmental. And we are coming up on the 250th. It's up to we, the people, to do our own 250th and celebrate it. So we have eight years ahead of us to celebrate from 1776 to 1783. I like to say the Declaration of Independence was actually a declaration of war against the government. And 1783 and the Treaty of Paris, that's when we became a nation. So with that, are there any questions?
Do you know when you're thinking about?
No, but I can give you general terms. So we're herding cats right now with a whole, coming here, we were dealing with yet another community that wants one and said, this is what, the last weekend of April. So during the school year. So April, barely April, May, early June, and September, October, early November because Thursday and Fridays about schools. So not summer. And we also feel that the people, our summers are short enough that people want their weekends to pursue their own interests. And not having children involved loses a wonderful aspect of what this is all about. So we're very much into tail end of the school year, beginning of the school year.
All the, all the, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Steve, again, thank you. Charlie, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Onto item number 13, Council Order 102501, Public Hearing and Action on the Request of the Finance Director to Authorize the Issuance of Up to $2,150,000 of the City's General Obligation Bonds and Note in Anticipation thereof to Finance School Track Construction Improvements in a Fire Engine and Tanker.
Look, I'm on the screen. There I am. Good evening, Nate Moore, Finance Director. First of all, before I get started, I just want to say, Tammy, thank you for your, all your help. I try not to bug you a lot, but I, any phone calls, text messages, emails, I appreciate all your help while I took over. So thank you. But yeah, I'm here to discuss, we have the fire department as well as the school department. Fire department is looking for a fire engine. And then the school is in need of a track, which I believe was discussed at previous. And I know Amy is here. Would you like to come up, Amy, and just discuss a little bit of, if you don't mind?
Maybe I'll give a little more background too. Just, we did discuss, I know for the citizens that are kind of listening, maybe hearing us, just jump right in. We did do a lot of discussion on this in the budget process on kind of our immediate capital improvement needs. We, a lot of discussion on some things that are kind of closing out on the surplus band bond from last cycle to fund some needed road improvements. I think between the city and state road spending, it's about $20 million in road infrastructure upgrades over the last year. And then we had some additions, highway excavators, some other pieces we've talked about, there's a few more. But it really came to the fore that there's two big things, I think, to reconsider for our next band bond cycles, which would be the school track, which is in desperate need of repair, and then the fire apparatus as well, which be our next bigger things for conversation. So that, I'll send it over to Amy to talk about the track.
Hi, everyone. Amy Bowles, Superintendent of Schools. We have talked to council for the last couple of years about the needs of the city track, of which the school uses for soccer and track practices and the community uses as well. So we've talked for the last few years with council and with the school board to try to find a solution for how we can rebuild the track. It's not at a point where we can resurface it anymore. It needs to be completely stripped and rebuilt. If any of you have been to the track lately, we are getting dangerously close to having to close sections of it. And we certainly could not at this point host track meets after this year. And as it is, we probably can't host anything that we, everything that we would like. So at this time, we had talked about a collaboration where we would do one-third, 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 meaning the city a third, the school department a third, and then we would work on fundraising for the other third. The school department in its budget this past year did do a Phase II TELP, the tax-exempt lease purchase that we did with EMC. And so we did and do have all new energy efficient lights up at the track. As you know, those telephone poles were becoming dangerous and we needed new lights. So as part of our school budget this past year, we do have that project completed. And so now looking to go to ban now because if we are to get the track done and on the schedule by spring and summer, we do need to go to RFP as soon as possible. So we had put together a budget of about 1.2 million, which would completely re-strip the track, rebuild it, also would look at, when we do that, it's going to completely ruin the soccer field. So redoing the field that's in the middle of the track. And that also would increase our ADA accessibility, which we also need to do. Currently, if you've been to the track, there's the two sides. The side that is on the middle school side is a steep, awful wooden staircase. And a lot of people that want to watch activities cannot currently get up those stairs and it's not ADA accessible. So in part of this, we would like to have a ramp that would improve accessibility for people that want to get to the track that way. The way it is right now, even with the garage and the entrance that's near the storage facility, it's not level. People that have tried to watch games or stand alongside the fence to watch activities going on, it's not easily handicap accessible on that side either. So that's our portion of the ban, if anyone has any questions.
Any questions? Counselor Stan?
Just for, for clarity, the one-third, one-third, one-third split will be reimbursed to the city who holds the ban or?
So one-third, we're good, Amy and I are going to try to directly fundraise for, we've had a few meetings on this as well. And then one-third and one-third would be just the debt service that both the city would take moving forward and the school would take moving forward. So that'd be kind of what we're looking for to look into our next budgets. And then the ban as well. So just kind of a process update on what folks are voting for today. This gets put in proof to go forward. Nate will go out to search for bans, you know, of a certain range, come back to us with a recommendation on which would authorize the ban. And then it kind of gives Sarah the, or sorry, Amy. Probably Sarah and Amy together, actually. We'll start working on getting RFPs, other pieces, and then we can come to come back and line up that funding would be immediately available once the RFPs kind of come in to do that. And then, and then we can draw it down on the ban, but then you convert it into a bond with the main bond bank at another cycle. So we've done this similar to the road project. So that's kind of what the vote is here today and how the funding would look going forward and how we build those into our budgets as well. And I think the spending pieces is a big one to keep in mind. I know Nate has a debt service here as well.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you. Two points. One, I think being able to say that the ban is a bond anticipation note for those of us who aren't here regularly on this. And secondly, I anticipate supporting this, but I want to raise, I guess, an issue that I've raised over the, over the time that we've had this conversation. I got, I was uncomfortable with this at first and got comfortable to it in part because of the public access that's part of it, that it's not strictly for school use, it's for public as well. And I think, as I've said earlier, I want to ensure that we highlight the public use of the track, that people know that it's available. I hadn't heard of it before we had these conversations. And if there's any way to, to track, public use of the track, I think that would be helpful just to better understand this use of the city's capacity for debt and for investment in the community. Again, I think I've gotten comfortable with it because I've had time. We've had these conversations over, it feels like a year, maybe it was less. But again, for me, the public use as well as the school use was a critical piece of that. So I look forward to seeing that highlighted as this is launched and moves forward. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd say what's already kind of happening with Roddy and Amy and the team and the kind of thinking of it as a recreational asset. I know we talked about the Tammy on Tiff, on if that could be considered one of our recreational trail pieces, but that's, it really is, seems to be used by a lot by the community. And also seems kind of cordial to Ellsworth's identity in that excellence in athletics. And yeah, anybody who's looked at the pictures that we provided of this track, this is not, wow, you know, we'd really like the most gleaming track imaginable. This is, you know, that looks like somebody bombed the track.
Yeah, it's getting more and more. Yeah, it's bad.
Any other counselor questions for Amy? I think, thank you.
Thank you.
It's, we, I know we're also talking about the fire engine tanker, so I'd see.
Yeah, I have Scott coming up to discuss the fire portion of the ban.
Good evening, Council. Scott Gilroy, Fire Chief, City of Ellsworth. Just to refresh, the last workshop that we had in council, we talked about replacement of a fire engine versus the tanker. This was a discussion that was started a year ago during budget cycle. And we went from replacing an engine to replacing the tanker. However, given the current state of our apparatus, it's highly recommended that we replace our current reserve engine, Engine 7. It's outdated for our capabilities now. And in doing so, we will put our current frontline engine into reserve status so we can get at least another five years out of it. However, in its current state as a frontline engine, we're spending more and more money because it's being consistently used and abused. It's been a frontline engine since the day it came through the door. It was purchased in 2016. It was a frontline engine since then. 2019, the city took over EMS. It increased the call volume on the engine between 2019 and 2023. That's a lot of wear and tear on that engine that originally, when it was purchased, that was not anticipated. So it started to cost us a lot of money. Engine 2 cost us over $30,000 in repairs last year outside of the wreck that it had. And this year, in the first quarter of this year, we're already over $10,000 into that engine. So I would really like to push that engine into reserve status, keep its capability because it does seat the number of people that we need to move around at city on calls if another truck goes out of service. So my recommendation is that we replace Engine 7, the reserve engine, with a new frontline engine.
Great, thanks, Chief. Any questions from counselors? Counselor Halloran?
The engine that you're talking about, that's the frontline engine, was that a new engine when you purchased it or was it used?
Nope, that was a brand new engine when it was purchased in 2016.
And this time around, are you still looking at a new one?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. As long as you all approve it.
Yeah, it could be a leased model, I should say, that we would.
It would still be a new truck.
Correct.
It would still be a new truck. There is no, there is no intention, unless otherwise directed, we would like to have a new frontline engine.
One further question. The one that you're telling us is obsolete. Do you have an estimate of value of that one?
So the last, the last trade-in request, I have to go back and take a look at it, but I think they were only offering $10,000 to $15,000 on a resale on it. It's almost a 20-year-old truck. But it has served the city well. Don't get me wrong. It's served the city well.
So you expect this new truck to be able to sit in reserve for about five years?
The new truck would not.
No, I'm sorry. The Engine 7. Engine 2.
Engine 2. Engine 2 would move to reserve status and we would hope to get five more years out of it.
Giving that, that would be about 15 years of use, which, that seems so short.
It is, but the nature of what we do every day now has shifted. And so the call volume has shifted at the same time. So our trucks that were lasting 15, 20 years, 20-plus years, our call volume has added to the wear and tear on those vehicles. So in the past, it was not uncommon to get 15, 20, 20 years out of a fire truck. But given the way we currently operate, frontline engines are not going to get that kind of time. So by allowing it to get eight, 10 years of frontline active duty service, if we purchase a brand new truck, we know that we could actually get probably 15 out of it because at the end of its life cycle, we can push it into reserve status and still get another five years out of it and start this replacement cycle that's been absent for the past, you know, eight or nine years. There was replacement trucks in the past, however, in the current cycle, it is not. It's not happened.
Any other counselor questions?
I have a question, but it's about the ban and the amount itself, not about the.
Go for it.
Okay, so I just want to be clear. Is the total school track the $1,150,000?
That's the total amount.
So it's a third and a third and a third. Then why are we borrowing that full amount if a third is going to become from private funding?
Take this. One is it's the contingency and the private funding, you know, that's the hope that we'd like to get there. I think we've seen this past, and Counselor Halloran, you've mentioned this before, we don't have to draw down that amount in the bond with the ban. But, you know, allowing it for the full price of the project and potentially if there's, these are quotes that we're looking for, but we don't necessarily, they're going to come in at that level. So we want to have the full amount authorized as a potential, just in case. Or if, when we, they say the soccer fields are going to be an extra $100,000. We just went through this and Castine was trying to redo tennis courts and they thought they had enough funding to do the whole thing. And actually, once they actually got it out to bid, it went twice as much. So this is just giving us a little bit of flexibility on if the fundraising doesn't come in quite as much or if there's a contingency that's over, having around $300,000 in contingency would be good here.
Counselor O'Halloran?
Oh, yeah, no, I'm good.
So these numbers are numbers that were made up inside? There wasn't people that have given rough estimates for this conversation?
Should we bring Amy back? No, they, we've talked to Main Track and Tennis, I think it was.
Yeah, we have rough estimates, Steve. They really, they won't do a hard and fast quote until you get on their books, but these are rough estimates. We've, and they've gone up over time. Like the first quote that we got two years ago, the quote continues to go up that we keep getting for this. So yes, this is a rough estimate for sure. But Main Tennis and Track is the company that typically does this kind of work. And they told us around the ballpark of $900,000 for that part. And then the $150,000 for the soccer field and 100 for the ADA ramp.
And this estimate is not three years old or anything like that?
No, 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 no. We've been, we worked on it again this fall.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Any other counselor questions? Counselor Smith?
Thank you. Nate, I hope that you're going to go over the debt schedule. I think that's an important piece of this. We've got it in our packet that shows declining debt service. And I know we've had conversations about getting the cycling into consistency. And then just to put a very fine point on it, I anticipate, voting for the bond anticipation note, based on the fact that we've been told about this one-third private donations coming in. And if it turns out that, you know, we didn't meet that mark by a significant amount, that's going to be a difficult pill to swallow. And I don't know how we address it at that point, but that is the expectation that we've been hearing consistently, that one-third will come in through private donation. I understand it takes time and we get the ball rolling, but I hope that the fundraising won't end until at least the target has been met, if not beyond that. That's, again, establishing my comfort level on this cost that we're talking about for the school track and other additional items. So that's my caution flag. And then also, if you, if now is the time or if you're planning it later in this presentation, but giving an overview of the debt schedule and how this factors in.
Yeah, and the, and the debt schedule, I'll just jump into that. You know, that, that third to last column, that 2026 ban, obviously, I have that $1 million, which would, that would take account for that one-third fundraising and it would actually, actually take account the $700,000 for the fire. So it would be a little bit higher if we were to go to the, the engine route. But based on that, yeah, you can see the very last column on the general fund portion, kind of seeing it start dropping off in 2028 and then obviously slowly going decreasing from there. But yeah, that, that, the 2025 ban bond, those are. But yeah, that, that, the 2025 ban bond, those are, previously when I brought this to the council, which I believe was at least three or four months ago, those were estimates. Those are solid numbers that we have now from, from the financing. So those numbers are accurate, the fourth from the last column. The third from the last column, like I said, is estimate based on $1 million with that, that ban. But like I said, with the engine being a million, the portion, the one-third portion, then you're looking at closer to 1.4. So that, that amount would be a little bit higher.
If you'd like to edit Tammy and Nancy to bring it down a little bit to force, we're going to have to come in a lot more on target on the fundraising in order to do the project.
I, fundraising is part of what I do for a living. It's difficult. You can't anticipate when it's going to happen, so I don't want to cramp the process. But I know, I believe that I'm being heard, that this is the expectation for myself as a counselor, that that one-third will come through. I appreciate the offer, but I, it's, you don't know when the checks are going to come. And sometimes they fall out of the sky and that's magical. Sometimes it's a lot of work.
It might be just a moniker piece for Amy and I to really move through. I have a ton of fundraising experience, once raised $20 million plus for multiple different endeavors. So I love this kind of work. I know that sounds strange to most people, but I can't wait to get some call time.
It's not horrible, it's, but it's a lot of work.
No, especially for something as important and vital to the community as, as both these pieces in some ways, I don't think. Although Scott does on, I know this is really fundraising for the track on this one, but Scott does a ton of work with their Firefighters Association too to try to limit the taxpayers piece on all those. Also note, just in terms of the dropping on the debt service, I did want to clarify, like next year, we are going up, you know, 350,000 or actually, maybe 375 or so from this. That's mostly due to the, the debt service on the previous bonds for the roads. So the following year, FY '28, will drop off by, so this is kind of when this would feather in. So next year, we're going to have to pick this, you know, 350,000 in new debt service. It's part of, you know, Counselor Halloran, I talked about not making it for the life of these products. So seven years on a road is a pretty quick bond and we're going to, you know, pay for it. I hope to be here for a long time within my city managership. So I'm not going to have to pass that debt service on in the ways others would. And then we'll have a little bit of a falloff. There's also some separate debt service that fell off this year, but that's relative to TIF funding and some of our TIF accounts. That'll be a much broader conversation. Also just to anchor in terms of costs, this is a big piece of it. And you've seen with schools and, and these fire apparatus, and to me, that's a big piece too. I know Counselor Halloran, you mentioned the deputy city manager and a city manager consultant, which I'm assuming is the consultant that's here to help us on finances at a very reasonable rate, discussed with city council, which, you know, counts haven't been reconciled yet for a long time. They probably haven't been reconciled and fixed since the last time we had a deputy city manager who's sitting to your left. Those are the big cost drivers. I know, you know, the police union negotiations, which Counselor Halligan helped to negotiate, were enormous increases in costs to the city, some of the biggest we have, both for police, both for fire, our clerk's office. I think they're absolutely vital. I don't talk about those costs in order to say that I don't think we need our school services or other pieces, our police services, but they are really driving the cost in our infrastructure, our aging infrastructure. And we worked really hard, I know you mentioned Counselor Stein on the 2.9%. It was, we were so laser focused on holding city spending to a 2.9% increase over the prior year as a levy over the previous year. That was negative 0.4% on the municipal side, up 5.1% on the school, and then 9% on the county, which blends the 2.9. And we didn't, you know, that's one piece of the equation. The assessment is a different piece on how that is distributed through the rest of the organization. I did write a memo as we went into the last budget process. I'll be redoing another memo before we go into the next one about macroeconomic trends in spending in the city and what's, you know, really, really driving things. You know, especially because there's been so much talk on this piece too, on full-time employee counts, on general government versus public safety. I think we added four public safety officers this cycle. You add that to the union negotiation increases, we're talking $800,000, $900,000 per year that those types of costs, which we're a growing city. I mean, gosh, I really feel like our police and fire departments need a lot more, our school needs a lot more. And we're also still laser focused on keeping government spending at that inflationary consumer price index level. We don't have as much control over the assessment and valuation pieces as they move forward. But also this debt service piece is something we're really going to have to consider. There is a bit of a jump next year. And in the following year after that, there'll be a little bit of a decline. But this piece, you know, should slot into that FY '28 debt service. So, you know, at that point, next year is the big jump of the 350. The year after that for this piece of, you know, this level should be manageable within this, this piece. And as Nate, I know your last time around, we talked about total debt service for the city, you know, comparable to other cities and towns, like we're just way, we're nowhere near our debt limit cap. Not even, that doesn't mean that we should spend the debt limit caps, I don't want to be. But our debt service level compared to other cities and towns is very reasonable. And maybe for the next ban bond, or bonds discussion, once, if the council were to approve this, we could have a little bit more of an in-depth conversation of kind of what that looks like.
And a big portion of the jump, like you said, was due to the roads that were neglected for several years. So that's why you'll see that big jump in 2027. Yes, ma'am.
What are the terms of, forgive me, but my finance lingo is, that's not my jam. But how long is this ban, ban bond for?
Well, I'd be looking at due for the track, it would probably be a 20-year piece. The fire, the fire engine or tanker, we'd probably be looking at maybe a 10 or 15, just depending on the length of, that'd be something I could discuss with Scott and figure out what the best term is. I don't want to, like, use Steve's term, I don't want to extend something out 20 years, it's only going to last 10 or 15.
Right, I didn't know if, because we're doing the two together, they would have to be the same amount of years that we can pay off the fire.
Yeah, we can, we can pay off the fire engine quicker, just so it obviously keeps with the life of the apparatus.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Steve.
Any further questions from counselors?
Clarity to this, and I don't want to speak for anybody, but what we're talking about tonight is pretty much a line of credit where we pay interest only until these projects are complete. And at that point, when you actually go to bond, is when we decide the term of the loan. I think that may bring some clarity to that process. So this is just a line of credit to use until the projects are ready for finance. And then it's almost like a construction loan that are building a house. Maybe that's.
Exactly.
Rough terms, but I, I'm trying to put it into.
Yeah, it's a good way to put it. A ban is basically our line of credit, our construction loan. You're paying just the interest while you borrow. And then we're going to eventually, once that's, all the projects are done, we'll take that to bond, a loan. And like I said, we can set the terms up to where, you know, if we set the track for 20 years, like I said, we could set the fire apparatus to be 10 years, 15 years, whatever we feel like deems necessary for the.
Yeah, okay, I think we had some lively conversations beforehand on the length of the product versus our debt service schedule. And I know we disagreed a little bit on that one. But, you know, and that's, that's where you're seeing this jump here. But, you know, at the same time, we also are, while we're doing a lot of catch-up on some infrastructure, we're also, I think this is potentially a, a good way to consider this too, is, you know, we're going to not pass this on for 35 years to, you know, it'd be nice to do that. And then they pass it on to, you know, five city managers from now and a new, and then they're just stuck when you see these debt service lists with a huge project that they, you know, had, the city had no, can't even remember. So I think we are doing so, thanks to this group, in a pretty fiscally responsible way right now for our debt schedule. But, you know, we also have a big capital improvement planning process. And I think that's when that test of that, on yes, the life and service of the project, but then also the full amount of needs and how much depreciation we have. And I know we'll be talking a lot more about that for the next budget cycle. But I think for the first time in probably five or six years, we'll have a real 10-year capital improvement prospectus on the full amount of depreciation because it doesn't get any better. And, you know, we're in good shape now, but I think that's going to be a very lively conversation about the full capital improvement. These are two small pieces of a very big, big puzzle. Counselor Moat?
So I am a little concerned about us ordering the issuance of the full 2.150 million dollars just because I don't want the taxpayer to be held accountable for that extra amount that we were going to go and do the fundraising for. So I could get behind it if we reduced it by $379,500. That's just my two cents.
It's more than two cents, it's 300. She still laughs.
There's the joke, yeah.
No, that's, thank you. This is a public hearing matter, so I'm going to open the public hearing to see if we have any public comments. Please enter the, or approach the lectern.
Good evening. I'm Josh Frost, the athletic director at the high school. I also live in Ellsworth, so. I've been athletic director for 11 years. While it has been the school track, it's also the community's track. I know Nancy had that question earlier about people that use it, can we use it? You go by any morning and you'll see people walking as the sun's rising. And when we're not using it in the evenings, certainly people are still walking. It's a very safe space to walk. If you don't mind just walking in laps and seeing the same thing eight or nine times, or as kids would say, six or seven times. Sorry. So it is the, it is the community track. It's something that we want to be very proud of. With the new lights, I've already brainstorming, thinking, you know, with time changes coming up here in November, you know, is it something that we can safely turn the lights on to a lower brightness? We can set those lights from anywhere from 0% to 100%. 100% is bright-eyed bright. But, you know, maybe Tuesday and Thursday nights from, you know, eight, seven to eight o'clock at night, they start going from 100% down to zero so that they're lit up. People want to go walk somewhere safe in the evenings, maybe the month of November, while we still can, maybe that's something we talk about and do. I don't know if it's the safest place to do that right now because when the track is wet, it is slippery. But maybe when we get a new track, you know, talk about things like that where we can use those new lights to our advantage. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that it is open for the community and it is the community track, that that actually facility is city-owned, school-maintained. So just, you know, thank you. Thank you very much.
And thank you for all, it's also on the Rec Commission, killed it over there again. Now they're just on multiple commissions and it's just, we're so lucky to have these folks. And Roddy says mostly good things about you.
Josh has been talking about that since I joined the Rec Commission three years ago. And, you know, he'll always give, give a little summary of, well, the, the, the visiting team had to run elsewhere because, you know, we couldn't run this track meet at school. It's unfortunate, it's a little embarrassing as well. And that's, it's the county seat. It's where all the other schools should be coming to run these, these meets. It's been disheartening to see, so.
Thank you, John. Any other public comments on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. How would the council like to receive?
Before we go to a motion, I'm wondering if there is a middle ground. Tammy and I have identified, well, you're all hearing the issue. And I, it's always good to get a strong vote on something like this. And I don't know if there's another solution rather than dropping it by the amount of anticipated fundraising. I do worry about, I don't know what that does to the contracting ability if you've only secured funds for two-thirds of the cost. But it would be great to have your vote on this. So I, I don't know what.
Hey, welcome back.
Maybe there's magic coming out of a hat here that'll help us with this.
So I am a little nervous that we wouldn't be able to sign a contract without showing the full amount, which will delay it a whole other year. They're saying if we don't get on their schedule, like soon, we're already pushing it a little bit, this project won't get done until the '26, '27 school year and we'll probably have to shut it down for next year.
And have higher costs.
Right.
So.
I, I can assure you, Charlie and I have met several times with a small group of people. We are committed to the fundraising. I know that may not make you feel better, but we understand. We've actually talked as a school organization about are there things we could do? Naming of certain parts of the track. Are there things we could go to alumni and ask about who are some of our top track and so? I think we have a plan in place, but I am nervous without us showing that we have proof of funding that we'll be able to get this done and, and the time schedule that we need it to be done.
Counselor Halloran? How long is this track needed replacement?
Since I, believe it or not, I'm on year four. And we've been talking about it for all four years. I've been interim and then superintendent and then it was before that, correct?
Yeah, I mean, since the bleachers blew over on it.
Well, when did they, I mean, it's funny because you talk about the useful life of something and it's like, well, useful life in Ellsworth? You know, that might be 40 years on a road. Or like, when it was built, when was this thing?
Either '88 or '89. '89.
'89, so.
So I guess, I'm always critical of money. And I guess I'm disappointed that this didn't get on the target with COVID dollars.
It was, Josh advocated for it.
I was going to say that, I remember.
It was talked about because it was an outside facility that people and citizens and students could have utilized. And I can't explain or answer those questions.
I can speak on this side that.
Yeah.
On the municipal side, I feel like we didn't do it justice. I would have rather had something that we could have driven by 20 years from now and said, we did that with COVID money. And on the municipal side, it seemed like it got picked away at little frivolous things that didn't seem like a good use of those funds. And I know the school department, municipal side got 880,000 bucks and the school department got how many million?
Oh, over a million.
No, but how many million?
Off the top of my head, Steve, I don't know. I didn't bring that amount with me.
Yeah, it was, you know, by the time I was here, we were last, down to the last bits. It didn't, wasn't all frivolous. I mean, it was a ventilation system for the fire departments that the trucks don't spew smog into them. And actually, I was mentioning that recently down there and how it's improved. And they're saying, hey, where do you think that smog goes? Also, you guys in the building are, including in this room, were benefiting from that piece too. But I, I agree, Steve. I think in retrospect, there was a little bit more of a premier project, maybe more of a lobbying effort on the counties. The way they structured it, like Bangor and their counties kind of came together on all their opera funding. The City of Ellsworth and like the county, how it worked here was totally separate. They got a lot more money than the city did, but the way we operate as a service center, it really was a missed opportunity, but.
And if you recall, Michelle asked us to go, this was a couple of years ago, asked us to go to the county about their remaining COVID funds. And we could not, we were not approved to get on the agenda or to speak to ask about that. And we tried for months to make that happen. So I, I don't disagree with you. I wasn't in charge when we went through all of that.
We'll say we are closed out. And if anybody wants an accounting of that, Ashley, our deputy finance director, did an incredible job of making sure we're closed out with the feds. We have the audit trail on all those pieces.
It would have been, it would have been a good project.
So I think we're, as I understand it, in order to be able to sign a contract, we're expected to have the full amount available. And I hear Counselor Moat's concerns about, you know, we didn't, you know, budget for that amount of money or we weren't anticipating having to pay it. So are there any other counselor? I think that's supposed to be where the rope is hitting the track here. So where are we? Sorry. Any other counselor thoughts on that, this specific issue?
So I have one more question about the fire truck. So are we paying for a million dollars for that truck upfront? Or is it a portion of, because I know they have to build it, correct? Or customize it?
We've only received quotes just to help with getting you guys a rough idea of what it's going to cost. We still have to go out to RFP and all that stuff in order to purchase the fire truck. The goal is not to spend, not to spend a million dollars. I would like to spend less than a million dollars. But based on the quotes that we receive, the range is roughly between eight and a million, eight and a million. So we don't want to be in a position where we're underfunded.
Right, but is there a portion that we need to put down or do you have to, when we pay for? I know the last fire truck we got, we had to put a percentage down. And then on delivery, we had to. And then on delivery, we had to pay for the remainder of it.
I don't have that number upfront, but if I remember reading what the, the rest of proposal was, it was like 10%.
Okay, and then how long is it gonna take before we receive?
So that's the problem. And if you've been watching the Congress and having these discussions, it's 18 months minimum, up to 38 months for a new fire truck to show up.
So I think that would give us plenty of time if we needed to add additional money. Just trying to think how to put this.
You borrow from the truck to finish the truck?
Well, you're not borrowing from the truck, but if you needed to go back and ask for additional funds, for, not for, for that, but.
Yeah.
That would give us some time, but.
Because the debt service on the full 100% may fall at a later time if we try to stagger the deposit. But in some ways, we won't know that until we go out, we come back with the best bids.
I was gonna say, that's the advantage of the band is we're not, it's the line of credit that we draw down when we need to, so that may work through the gap.
So we won't have to bond for that full amount. We could say, all right, it's only gonna be this amount of time and then, but we're gonna, but we might even have to ban or bond for that full amount anyways, just because, I think to your previous points, we can't just say, we're gonna promise to pay it later on. We have to have the funds in escrow or something like that. Because a future council might say, well, we don't want to put an extra $600,000 towards that truck when it's delivered or something.
Is it harder to fundraise when people look at this discussion and see that we already have the money, we just, some of it's extra? Does it make it more difficult to convince?
I don't think so. I think Amy and I are gonna be finding the track fundraising. It's, looking at what Nolton Park, it was done there, fundraising effort doesn't seem, at least what I can read, has been done of that magnitude. You know, they raised like 350, I think, for the park. And the community came together on that big piece. You know, I think Amy and I will be able to do that for this one.
Okay. Unless we have any other questions or thoughts, I think we're at the point where I would entertain any motions from the council on this matter. Counselor Smith?
I move an order authorizing the issuance of up to, oh, 2, $2,150,000 of the state's general obligation bonds and notes in anticipation thereof to finance the school track construction improvements and the fire truck engine, excuse me, fire engine slash tanker.
Friendly amendment, city, you said state.
Did I really? Beg your pardon.
Yeah, state on the mind.
Be great if the state paid for it.
I accept the friendly amendment to the motion.
I'll second that.
Second, we have a motion second. Any further discussion proposals from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
I am.
You may. I'm informed that a bond anticipation note requires a majority of five counselors to be approved, so the motion fails.
We have a statement, we can know, motion?
We can, I mean, there's, we can also bring this up at the next meeting or we can, there will be a new council. If there's any proposed amendments that would get us there, I'd be entertaining to those, entertain those.
I, I think the first step would be having voted on the prevailing side move to reconsider? Or is it gonna be a new motion?
That's a good question.
Let me try a new motion and see if I can get the words right this time.
That works for me.
Already moved on to the next agenda item. Okay, I need, there's math involved here, so we're dropping it by $350,000? Thank you. Math, it's your world. Order authorizing the issuance of up to $1,770,500 of the city's general obligation bond and notes in anticipation thereof to finance school track construction improvements and fire engine tanker.
I will second that.
We have a second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes with the amendment. Thank you, attorney Pice. We're onto agenda item number 14. Council order 102502, public hearing and action on proposed amendments to the 2025 Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 36, General Assistance Ordinance.
I'm gonna give you guys a little handout, because.
Thanks. I'll pass it down. We can share, John and I.
Thank you.
Katina Van Adesong, Director of Social Services. This is just my yearly maximum change. This happens every year, the state does minimal changes to the maximums of what we can allow clients to receive. And this is actually the lowest, very minimal changes, so I'm really happy with this. You'll see the little stars, I just put the amounts of what they changed from last year.
Could you just kind of go through them broadly for the public?
Sure. So, every year, the state has a formula and they give us our yearly maximums of what we can help our clients with. So we have the necessities, so we have our overall maximum for household, which is your housing maximums, your food maximums, and I believe the mileage rate was also one that changed. And those are actually the only four amounts that changed this year. Usually there's a bunch. And it looks like there was an increase of $1.39 per person for food maximums. So normally, a person last year who was getting assistance, they could have gotten $67.91 in food from last year. This year, they can get $69.30, for an example. That's weekly, sorry, monthly.
So there's increases to the overall maximums, housing maximums, food maximums.
And mileage.
And the mileage rate.
Yep.
And this is, you can explain the process from, the state requires this?
Yeah. These are set amounts that the state requires us to help assist. So.
We didn't come up with these numbers?
That is correct. Like I, there really isn't anything I could do if you guys disagree with this. I don't know, it's never happened, so I really don't know what I would do. Probably go out of here going, oh my God.
Tina, of these maximums, then, the city is reimbursed by the state up to the 70%.
Seventy percent. Yep.
And how does someone from the public utilize this general assistance? They just call you and say that they're having a hard time.
Correct.
With paying their bills or getting food and.
Any, any necessity. So you got your rent, you got your heating fuel. I'm a little concerned this year. I'm sure you guys have all heard, Bangor has lost a bunch of funding. So they're shutting down, they're having to shut down a shelter. And they're also having to shut down a warming center and they're losing 150 beds. So I have a feeling Ellsworth might absorb a little bit of that. I have seen a little bit of an increase in the past month with people being worried about shelter. Obviously, the winter's coming, so. We have some great nonprofit organizations that we're all gonna be coming together and try to hit this one right on the head before it gets worse, so. If we can all come together and work together, I think it would be a lot easier, so.
Counselor Stein?
The, the folks that are receiving these funds, they're required to give some sort of information to you or you?
Yeah, it's a general assistance application, so it's a process. They call me and I distinguish whether it's an emergency or if it's something they need to give me paperwork on. They can either make an appointment, but if it's urgent, I will help them at that time. And we go through their situation, we discuss it, we figure out what the need is. And then I look into, do a little bit of homework on their application, I contact DHS and do a bunch of homework on it and then decide income-wise if they're eligible. And then we go from there. Every application is different, so it's not like I can either help you with a certain amount or I can't, so.
Do they have to be Ellsworth resident?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other counselor questions before we go to public comment? Counselor Halloran?
This heating portion?
Yeah.
So if someone comes in and receives 225 gallons of heating fuel for their home or apartment in January?
Yes.
Can they come back in February and ask for the same thing?
They can come back every 30 days.
I'm sorry?
They can come back every 30 days to apply for assistance. However, something's called an eligibility letter, so if someone's eligible for assistance, I require them, say they're, they're not working, but they're eligible to work. So I would require them to go look for four jobs a week for 30 days. They would bring me back their paperwork and I would call their job searches to make sure they really have done what they were supposed to do. And if they're eligible and they've done everything that I've required, then they can get assistance again. If they haven't done what I've required, then they won't be able to get assistance. Or I will tell them, this is what you have to do to be able to get assistance. And then I say, call me back after you've done what I've required. So they can apply every 30 days, yes. The state sometimes puts a maximum on that sometimes, but they haven't, this year, sometimes they'll say, well, they can only get assistance for six months. But currently, as it stands right now, they can apply every 30 days ongoing until they're helped. Or find a job or apply for social security, so on and so forth.
Any other counselor questions? Tina? This is the public hearing, so I'm gonna open the public hearing. Anyone in the public would like to comment on this matter, please approach the lectern. Can you please come to the lectern and state your name for the record?
Sorry.
Early Wall, 26 Washington Street. I was just curious how long I had to be a resident to?
It's, it's a year, however.
Tina, can you come to the, sorry.
Usually loud enough. Yeah, we try to uphold the year residency mark. However, if you have somebody who's homeless, we do reach out to the previous municipality. I will ask them where they previously were permanently living. And some don't know. But if I do get some information of them, I'll call the previous town and ask them, you know, if you, they've ever applied for general assistance there? And if they have, and how long was it that you helped them? If it was within a 60 to 90 days, I will say, well, you're still responsible for this resident, if you were able to help them. I mean, I would, if they're living here and they don't have any way to get to that municipality, I will take the application. But I will also make that municipality responsible for their financials. So I will say, I'll do the application, but you guys will have to pay for their assistance.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Katina, we've talked, I'm Michaela from Friends in Action, so we've talked a lot on the phone and stuff. But, so what I've heard in meetings, and I just want to verify if this is accurate or not, so I can give accurate information, is that THA is diminished at this point, is what I've been told, and that HEAP started a waiting list back in March. So at this point, is funding for heating, like, when our seniors come to us and they've run out of heat, is it you that we're going to now? Is it, is it just you at this point or is there somewhere else? Yes, sure, yeah.
The THA, the fund through, well, what used to be Down East Community Partners, that's an actual just strictly donation fund. So a lot of the times, that fund does not exist. So over the years, we hear that all the time. They still have funding, it's just not through THA. So what they will do is it's not through their actual HEAP program, it's through an emergency-based program. So if they have an emergency client that their pipes are froze, they're completely out of heat, they will call me and I can help with that part of it. Yep. But if it's their regular HEAP appointment, I will require them to apply for heating assistance first before they apply for general assistance, so.
There's also the Down East Community Wood Bank, which is small but growing.
Yeah, actually, when you said that, I actually had a client call the other day and ask if we had any wood available. And I'm like, by Godfrey, I know a place. Yeah, because that was hard. I mean, I didn't, I didn't have that availability a few years ago, so.
Any other comments, questions from the public on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counselors, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Moat?
Move to approve the new amended 2025 version of the Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 36, General Assistance Ordinance as presented.
Second. Second. Any further discussion from the council? Counselor Halloran?
For clarity.
Sure.
We're not talking about the program, we're talking about the increase to the program. Here?
The maximums?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we're approving tonight, is just the small increase, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else from the council before we vote?
It's really complex and dynamic and difficult work you're doing. Thank you for doing it.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
I should also note that Tina is the BL Award winner for this year for.
No, she's the MOAT Award winner.
Oh, no, she was the MOAT. Oh, my God.
Nate was BL.
Even, no, Nate was BL, MOAT Award winner for excellence in government. And actually, Tina, I think one of the reasons she was chosen is that, not just her longstanding service, but ridiculous attention to detail. I think she got a perfect audit the last time, the general assistance piece, which in the city of Ellsworth is definitely something to celebrate.
I wanted to run around the city.
Even more than the details, I think Tammy's here too, like, her care for a very, you know, difficult, very, very difficult job is incredible. She also manages our elections with the utmost integrity. There's nobody that I would rather have in the entire state of Maine. She also leads, like, the general assistance, like, seminars with the state and municipal associations, so she's not just a gift to the city of Ellsworth, she's a gift to the state of Maine, so thank you.
You guys make me cry every time I come in here.
Well, hopefully, we'll, all those in favor? There we go. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Tina. I have been asked by undisclosed counselor for a five-minute break at this period of time. And we have the Moore Center next, which I know many of us are here for, but why don't we take a quick five to stretch legs and attend anything else that needs to be attended to? And we'll be back in here and starting at 8:15. Thank you, Chair.
I tried cigarette smoking, I tried chewing, I took a swearing.
Oh, that's a good idea, yeah.
I am very high, I'm very high in.
We're back.
Tried in morning school.
Here, I'll leave that there, so I don't forget it.
That's yours to use, just in case.
We are back. Okay, council item, agenda item number fifteen, council order one zero two five zero three. Discussion of Potential Action on the Moore Community Center Lease. Andrew Pierce?
Great, I'm going to send this over to Roddy.
Good evening.
Leading this one up. Roddy, can you introduce yourself?
Oh, yeah, Roddy Erlenbach, Director of Parks Wrecking Facilities for the City of Ellsworth. Yeah, so just wanted to give you a quick update from the, um, we last discussed the Moore Center at the workshop on the sixth. Since then, following the recommendation of Counselor Beal, uh, we transposed a bunch of our original data from the spreadsheet into a more budget-style format, which made it a lot more user-friendly, able to kind of identify true costs, uh, expenses, as well as anticipated revenues. Uh, we recalculated our, uh, kind of the way we're, we're figuring what it would cost to clean the building. Um, rather than go price per square foot, um, we looked at what it would cost to pay a current city employee for three hours of cleaning per day to take care of the common areas in the building. Our occupancy costs have all been reassigned to include the applicable expenses for the short-term rental areas. Um, kind of taken a little bit more of the burden off the tenant organizations that would have allocated spaces within that footprint. We also, uh, I met with YMCA staff, who do all the administrative support for the building, uh, the programming and the scheduling of the short-term rental areas. Um, we got their true FY twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, uh, actuals, and we discovered that the revenue they're already generating there from short-term rental is enough to make up, uh, what we would need to for the short-term rental spaces for a breakeven for those spaces, which was really good news. While we're talking about the administrative role, um, we're still evaluating what it would cost to put an administrative employee in there. Um, identifying that they do program support, uh, all the scheduling, all the billing for all the short-term rental for both the tenant organizations and any external renters that might come into the space. Um, the YMCA, I believe Matt's here, um, we've had some very quick conversations about whether or not the YMCA would be willing to maintain administrative support for the building in the short term. He's agreed to that. Hopefully, if we get through, um, tonight with a, um, approval of the, the lease agreement, uh, we'll immediately begin discussions to talk about the, um, the fees for all these short-term rental spaces with a, a fee for tenant organizations who are already in the building, and then again for external rental revenue. Um, but the YMCA would be interested in maintaining that administrative support. Um, if the city would consider a percentage of the profits from that short-term rental revenue to help offset the cost of the administrative employee. That, and that basically would help cover the expense of booking those short-term rental opportunities. And again, that would be a kind of a short-term or interim, um, suggestion until someday when perhaps the city would put an administrative position there. We did get a draft lease agreement that I sent out with the council packet, uh, last week. On Friday, I met with the tenant organizations to talk about their comfort with the, uh, with the lease. They did have one edit they would like to, um, propose. Um, and that basically, um, given the tenant organizations the opportunity to terminate the lease with ninety days' written notice, um, which is pretty standard in a lot of lease agreements. Um, so if we do want to move forward with the lease agreement, uh, that would be one edit that they would, they would like to see in the final document. Um, I know we've discussed this at great length over the last couple of meetings and the last workshop. Um, and if you guys have any questions or needed any clarity, I'd be happy to answer any questions now.
Thanks, Roddy. Any questions for Roddy, council?
Roddy? It's great news about the short-term rentals, both for revenue, but also because it's such a useful thing for the community. But back to the revenue, what do you suppose is the capacity of short-term rentals? Could we, could the administration get, uh, more rentals in more often, in more rooms? Could that offset other costs?
I see a lot of, see a lot of opportunity and a lot of potential. Um, but it would, it would basically come right back to what the council's comfort level is, with how involved in the building do we want to be? As of right now, uh, one of the, one of the big things that we discussed with the tenant organizations was trying to get them out of the auditorium and try to move some of their programming that happens in the auditorium into other spaces to free up that auditorium for external rental revenue potential. Um, if you look throughout the region, there's nowhere that I'm familiar with that you could rent an auditorium with a stage, sound, light, a piano, whatever you want. Um, speaking with the admin there, um, they have had interest, um, for organizations to come in and do day-long conferences or trainings or education of some type. It would seat a hundred people. You could easily come in and make a couple hundred dollars for an eight-hour conference to go in there. Um, with the kitchen, in the space, in the hallway, we could cater the event. Um, there's all kinds of potential for that auditorium space. That really was the primary focus for me, was how do we, how do we stay true to our commitment to the organizations that are there and provide them the space they need to deliver their programming? Um, but at the same time, be sensitive to the fact that the auditorium has a lot of potential to generate even greater revenue, um, and do more to offset the cost, uh, not only to the tenant organizations, but to the, to the city as well. If we really want to go thinking long-term, um, something that's been identified in the comprehensive plan uh, is increasing opportunities for recreational programming, um, to kind of identify any gaps in rec programming for the city. Uh, it's something that I've already started the process on, of a Parks and Rec Needs Assessment, see where we're falling short in serving the community with their recreational programming needs. Thinking about offerings in the summertime, kind of similar to what the YMCA is doing with DayCamp, but for a different demographic, uh, do outdoor education and outdoor rec programming. The Moore Center could, could be kind of the hub of that type of programming, where we would have an admin there booking all the short-term rental opportunities in the building, but they could also take over, um, billing and scheduling for rentals at the Pavilion at Norton Park, the gazebo down at the Harbor Park, any of our recreational programming that we wanted to do, far as DayCamps or anything. Um, there'd be a lot of opportunity to keep that person a little bit more busy and bring more opportunity to generate revenue within the Moore Community Center. But those are just two very quick ideas I've had, um, within just the two months that I've been working on it. So I'm sure, uh, sky's the limit for what we could do out of that building.
Any other questions from counselors? Counselor Halloran?
No, go ahead.
When the Y came forth saying that they did, no longer wanted to manage the building, they gave us some numbers that although the rent was a dollar a year, they were still administratively losing a hundred and fifty grand a year doing. I don't see that in these numbers. How, what do you think the cost of the city is with your proposal?
The cost of the city, under?
They were losing a hundred and fifty grand and wanted us to take it over. What are we going to lose?
According to these numbers, we stand to make fifteen thousand dollars a year in revenue.
That's what I'm struggling about, because, um, maybe there could be some explanation that if they were losing a hundred and fifty grand, and where can I?
Would you have Matt behind us?
Yes, Matt is right behind us. One thing I will add is, we are not, um, going to be cleaning, we're not responsible for cleaning the allocated spaces. So the individual tenants will be cleaning their rooms that are allocated to them. The only obligation of the city for cleaning will be the common areas in the short-term rental spaces. So you're basically losing half the footprint of the building in cleaning costs.
That's not a hundred and fifty grand a year, is it?
Yeah, we can talk to Matt.
Matt raised his hand too, Roddy, I'm not just pulling.
All right, thank you. Matt McCamery, CEO, Down East Family Y. As Roddy mentioned, a significant portion of that is the cleaning, both the nighttime cleaning and cleaning of all spaces, um, every, basically every square foot every day, or five days a week. Uh, the other piece is that the rent for the organizations that are there are going up significantly compared to what they have been. And I think the organizations understand what, what the needs are, but, um, that also is a, a significant portion where the rent for the, both short-term rentals and the long-term rent, rentals, um, with the tenants that were there, were kept, for the most part, I think there was one increase in the eleven and a half years that we were managing the center. And that was part of the lease, the original lease, that we couldn't go in and raise rent every single year, even though our expenses were going up.
I should, I should note also the, um, that's kind of how the lease is designed, is more, and Roddy, if you want to speak more about that, and ways of talking to some private business owners on these pieces, on really charging for, you know, what does it cost to actually utilize the space? I know, um, and then kind of negotiating that on our, um, years, and then also how we use shared spaces, with the actual square footage is, I should also note that Chair Beal, or, sorry, former Chair Beal, it's a hard habit to break, I guess I won't have to do it too much, or maybe I will, because I figure I should still help out. Um, but she was with Roddy on Friday and has been looking over these numbers, um, and really helping us dial in to the budget, exactly how to charge for the square footage, how we're going to kind of, um, work this lease. Uh, and she, you know, mentioned she supports this, and she would if she was here. Um, but, uh, Roddy, if you want to talk more about how we structured that?
Yeah, so essentially, um, I, I took a lot of the information that Matt provided me, um, invoices for utilities, building maintenance, cleaning, snow removal, everything. And basically, us, like, totaled that all up for the year, and that was included in the council packet. And then the, where I didn't have data was basically HVAC preventative maintenance. What was the other one? It was HVAC maintenance and property maintenance costs were not included in those figures. So I kind of extrapolated what we pay for City Hall for the HVAC preventative maintenance and added that, uh, as a line item. And then snow removal, lawn mowing, landscaping, that the city would take on, I added that cost in there as well. And then we took that total cost of what it costs to have the building, what it costs the city to have the building operating, and, uh, divided that out based on the tenant organization's square footage. And then, those are the numbers that we'll use for this first year. And then every year going forward, so fiscal year twenty-seven, we'll look at the actual operating expenses for FY twenty-six, apply that, and that will give us the number that we need to make up and charge back to the tenant organizations for that year. So they're basically, they'll be looking back one year at our actuals, and their lease payment will, will adjust based on what it costs to operate the building the previous year, with the understanding that we cannot raise, uh, costs more than five percent due to an increase in utility bills. If they reallocate the footprint within the building, that can make more than a five percent. If they reallocate the footprint within the building, that can make more than a 5% adjustment, but just based on the occupancy costs, we can't go up more than 5% year over year.
And so for making more money on rentals and other pieces, we'll try to put that back into more capital-type expenses for the building over the long term as well. But, you know, moving forward, these will get more to, kind of, I think, from the workshops and from our council discussions, when this many times that was sort of the implied brief from council was to make this building, you know, for those that are there, it's very community service-oriented organizations in that we should be trying to make money, but we should be trying to charge them for what their use of the building is for, for the building itself. And I think that this proposal does that, but it also gives us some flexibility to look at actuals, move those forward. And then really, now that the city's in that building, really is to try to maximize the community space as well, but also working with our partners. This isn't going to be, hey, you know, come in there and it's, it's laser-tagged through the entire place five times a week, or maybe, but with, with our partners that it is a community service that is in line with the rest of the groups. I'd also note that the school is now in there. I think it's around 12,000 would be the, you know, for their pre-K programming is in there, and that's based on the square footage, that's about an additional 12,000. So we'll have, but in some ways, that's, you know, we're paying ourselves, but we really want to make sure that the city's using it, the school's using it, you know, each piece of the building is paying what, what it costs to use it. And as Roddy said, as we look to configure it for highest community use, the organizations, whether internal or external that are using it, we have a price figure to kind of, to go by here.
The thought is for the next little while that hopefully profit of 15,000 and change would go to reimbursing the Y for administrative?
A percentage of it would, and that's, what we're looking for tonight is approval on the lease agreement, and I want to reiterate, the lease agreement doesn't derive at a dollar amount. We agree on the equation that we will use to create that dollar amount. And what that does is allows the organizations that are in there, it allows them the flexibility to say, a year from now, I'm paying a little bit more than I'm comfortable paying based on our budget. I can drop this one room, re, reset what I'm paying out, and they can really tailor their programming and their footprint within the building to meet the costs that are comfortable for them. And then if they drop a room, that gives us the opportunity to find another tenant to move in without restructuring the lease agreement for everybody in the building.
I'm still curious about the administrative part of this. Would that, the Y be managing the other tenants, the anchor tenants in the building as well as the short-term, or would that fall on the city or your department?
So it's my understanding that each of the organizations in there do have their own administrative support. What the Y is doing for administrative support is scheduling and billing all of the external rental revenue. All those people who don't rent a monthly space, what I'm referring to is a tenant organization or an internal tenant, they're working with the external renters, building the calendar, scheduling all of the spaces, doing the billing, doing the receiving.
And some of the other pieces too, when it comes to cleaning and future maintenance and programming, I know that's kind of what we've been talking about with Parks and Rec and with this building, but also with the school as another anchor tenant that's coming in here. How do we maximize this community space for the school's needs, for the city's needs, for our groups that are in there? And, you know, again, that this lease gives us the kind of, here's the price point, if you're going to use the space, here's how much it costs to utilize the space, and now let's, you know, negotiate agreements that are highest use for the building and kind of move forward. So there, you know, how can we potentially looking to future cycles on spending as well on, you know, the school's location with this, and they have janitorial assets that might be able to be brought to bear. We also have snow plowing assets that can be brought to bear. I think in future years, as we, you know, really go through holding this building on the city's side for ourselves for the first time in a decade, this will be really important for us to, to, this, this isn't the end of the work at the end of this lease. There's a lot more to be, to be done here.
Yeah, the, the second half of the recommended motion here would also grant us the authority to work out some of those details as far as the price points for the short-term rental and to work with the YMCA to figure out exactly what our proposal is for helping offset their cost. I envision that being an MOU between the city and, and the Y. One of the very first things that comes to my mind about that short-term rental revenue, currently, the conference room that seats 30 people, and the auditorium that has a stage, seats 100, has a piano, has audio visual, all that stuff, those two rooms are getting rented for the same hourly rate. Doesn't make sense to me. So it's not, not necessarily like an answer or a equation that we are able to present right now, but it would give us the authority to, or charter the authority to work with the tenant organizations with me and figure out what our fee schedule is going to be for all the spaces within the building.
Also, I should, should note that Michelle was singing Roddy's praises this whole time. You could probably hear it here. He's, one of the reasons bringing him in from Sugarloaf and his background in recreation, but also economics, I think he calls it reconomics, and he's always talking about program revenue and these other pieces, you know, and how it's been awesome to have him here thinking creatively about these pieces on, yes, we need to expand recreational opportunities in Ellsworth, but, you know, we can also do so in a, in a position to generate some revenue too. I should note too, on the, the length of the lease, I don't know...
We're looking for a five-year term. Identifying that the lease that was entered with the YMCA for 10 years kind of handcuffed them, didn't give them a whole lot of opportunity to come back and reevaluate and, and adapt to cost increases. So currently, I believe all the tenants agree a five-year lease is a comfortable spot for them, and I believe that would be comfortable for the city as well.
So there might be a small edit to the motion to execute a, a five-year lease agreement.
I believe in the, the verbiage of the, the lease right now, it's a blank. It says execute the lease for a number of blank years, so. Does it? Okay, five years?
Any other council questions? Councilor Heller?
I might be diving in too deep here, but I would be the first to tell you that I was critical of this project, $4.7 million renovation and renting it for a dollar a year for 10 years. And the payment on that is just under $27,000 a month. One, aside from all that, one question I have is we have Friends in Action that is taking a rough number of $11,000 a year increase, is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay. And, and you have the Music Institute. I, I don't know if that's an increase or not, but one of the questions that I have is you've got Friends in Action paying half of what the Y is paying. And I have to wonder, I would assume that the Y is collecting money for their services at that building, and I'm guessing Friends in Action does not, or am I wrong here?
Most of our services are activities and programs. Songs. The Y's a conscious group.
So I guess my question would be, you know, if the, the Y is paying twice what these people are paying, but they're also taking in far more revenue, I'm guessing, than these people. Is that fair to say?
I, I'd welcome Matt to go up and speak to that because I don't know.
Yeah, and also while Matt's coming in, but it's kind, we did discuss this. To me, what's important about this lease too is that this is the cost of operating the building for those organizations to, you know, to, to bear those costs. And I think it's, you know, even at these organizations, it is, you know, if you do the math on what the monthly fee is for all-inclusive with the utilities, these are still good deals. Again, to your point, Steve, on one organization has gone the last 11 years without any kind of upgrade or increase in payment. And I, we talked about, that's a lot to kind of come forward on, but also it's really important, at least to me too, in this next five-year lease, so we don't get in this business of the Y is paying a dollar, but actually the way the lease structure is, we take this and that. And if we want to give a subsidy for these organizations, they pay for what it costs to be in the building, and then we have a budget process for our social services groups. And if we want to increase our, our contribution to Friends in Action, I think this would be excellent reasoning to want to, you know, to, for Friends in Action to come forward and to say, hey, you know, we've seen a big increase from this year to last year, you know, I, I can't speak for the council. I would support that piece. I was pretty critical last time around that we just need to keep it to inflation for any social services spending and not go any higher than that. I think this would be one of those unique cases, but we also keep it there. So it's pretty clear that the subsidy for that is for a specific organization for their rent, so that three years from now, we're not in a, how, how much do we get them back up to the level to pay for the building? You know, do we give them five years? We could restructure the lease like that, where they have a staggered amount and the city holds more of the cost than the YMCA. But to me, it's much cleaner just, this is what it costs to operate the building, here's how much square footage you have, send it to the organizations. And yes, there still is the social services part of the budget process for subsidizing organizations and making it crystal clear, like this subsidy is for X. And I think Friends in Action, considering this is a big jump in this year, I would like to see them receive additional funds in that process.
And also, if we're comparing organizations, I would absolutely be in favor of price differentiation between for-profits and nonprofits, but if we're looking at nonprofits, there's all kinds of different ways that they operate. Some charge user fees, some operate with donations only and give free services. So it's kind of up to the way that they run things. I don't think it would behoove us to kind of step in and, and micromanage within various different nonprofits compared to each other.
Yeah, just point of clarification on the Moore Community Center childcare. We do bring in just about $700,000 or $600,000 in revenue, but our expenses are greater than that. We do not make money at the Moore Community Center child cares. One of the largest child cares in Hancock County that takes state subsidy, that offers infant care and toddler care, we don't make any money. You add on the food program that we have that serves both childcare and Friends in Action, that program loses over $60,000 a year. It's, it's never been about making money at the Moore Community Centers, about continuing to be able to offer services and keep these organizations together.
To clarify, I wasn't talking about profitability or making money. I was interested to see what you're taking in compared to those people.
Sure. We're losing about, at the Moore Community Center, if this lease goes through, sort of as is, not talking about our MO, possible MOU with the city, and we're in our budget process right now, and if we take out the expenses that we're, that we've been incurring at the Moore Community Center, doing all the custodial services and admin costs, we're budgeted for 2026 to lose about $65,000 at the Moore Community Center.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. See, some of the tenant organizations are here. Does anyone have, want to provide any brief comments as far as the lease goes?
John Lindquist, Friends in Action Executive Director. First thing I want to do is thank Roddy for working on it really hard, and we are in favor, very much in favor of the lease as we, there are some places that, as you point out, are a little more difficult for us. Do have an $11,000 increase in rent, and we take on the risk of the increase in maintenance costs, cleaning and maintenance costs by the, by the formula of looking back at last year's costs. But we have faith that the city is going to do their best to keep that within the cap. And so even in light of that, we support it. Last time I was here, I put up a cost of $108,000, was what, under the first proposal, and we have gone through, we did some program reduction, which saved us some money, and reworked the cost of the short-term rental, because we have to rent some of the short-term. So they'd get it back down to a manageable number for us, you know, it's not nothing, but it's manageable. And so I just wanted to say, in spite of all those things, that we do support it and would like to see it go forward.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for all your work. Heidi Stanton-Drew, Executive Director at ECMI. Roddy, thank you so much. He's been an incredible partner already in this, and we're thrilled he came back to Ellsworth, so thank you. We are fully in support of this lease. We call the Moore Community Center home. We have for over a decade, and I know you've been, you know, you all know, we've talked over and over again about all the wonderfulness that happens there, and, and we want to continue that, and we are eager to move forward. This process has been going on for a bit. It's just sort of been out there in the ether that something was going to change, and I could start to do my "something's coming, something..." But we didn't know what was coming, and we're just grateful that now we know what's coming, and that's always an important thing, to be able to move forward and to budget and to plan and all of that. The increase is less impactful on us because we have a smaller allocated, is that we're using allocated space, but we also rent a lot of space by the hour, and that's something we'll work on separately. But we, we're just, we're very ready to, to move forward and to solidify our place there and to work with the partners and, and see where we're going from there. And so we're, we're just grateful and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other tenant organizations here? Well, I think council, we've heard a lot of good information tonight, very helpful. How would we like to proceed?
I'll make a motion.
Please.
I motion to authorize the city manager to execute the five-year lease agreement for the Moore Community Center as prepared by the city's legal counsel and to negotiate and finalize any additional details related to short-term rental pricing for both internal and external users of the facility.
Second.
Second? Motion and second? And just discussion with council? Councilor Smith?
I want to reflect on one thing, I'm looking back on my notes from the October 6 City Council, and, excuse me, the note I have from Roddy's memo is the goal is to develop a transparent, equitable, sustainable lease model to cover occupancy costs as much as possible while preserving community programs and services there. And it sounds like the work that you've done with guidance from Michelle and work with the, the tenants, you have surpassed that goal, and I want to thank you for that. This has been difficult. I know it's been very long, and it's exciting, rewarding to see that working together, you all have been able to come up with something that works for everybody. So I thank everyone involved for that, Roddy in particular.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank the tenant organizations for working with us. It truly was a collaborative effort right from the very get-go.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Ready, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all. Agenda item number 16, council order number 102504, discussion of potential action on the renewal of the Merrill Park parking lot lease.
Great.
This one is sponsored by myself, so this one's pretty straightforward. It's a recent lease renewal at the same terms that this parking lot, it's the Merrill Park right over on Franklin Street off to the left in there, that's the United Methodist Church, same terms. Briar, our legal counsel has looked at it, sorry, too much Dr. Pepper too fast. And the tenants are, thankfully, they want to keep operating at the same terms. It's a great deal for the city. We get more downtown parking, we kind of maintain the lot, and the United Methodist Church gets a place, they don't actually, they haven't used it too often to kind of shut it down. They do have the ability to say, hey, we're going to use it for a private function or for, you know, a service need. It almost never happens, but they like the ability to preserve that, so it's kind of a win-win. I could be wrong, but I, that's pretty much it. I think this one's kind of a no-brainer, so.
Okay. Any questions from the council? None? Questions from the public? Seeing none. How would the council like to proceed? Councilor Smith?
Move to authorize the city manager to enter into a lease renewal agreement with the United Methodist Church of Ellsworth at the... United Methodist Church of Ellsworth at the terms specified and prepared by the city attorney as presented.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Yes.
Sometimes they're easy because they are.
I should have sold that one. I've done a lot of work here.
Number 17 on the agenda, council order number 102505, request of the Public Works Director to award the bid for two vertical balers.
Good evening, council. Mike Harris, Public Works Director. I'm here tonight to ask for the approval of purchasing two vertical balers for our transfer station. You have the memo in front of you, it was put out to bid. The low bid was a company called United Hydraulics, and they actually had two pieces of equipment that they bid. And so we are requesting that we go with the PTR 3400 HD, which you would see in the memo for the reasons that I've stated. But basically, it provides a bigger, heavier bale so we can bale more material in a bale so we pay less transport costs when we're transporting bales because we can transfer bigger bales. And it has a bigger crushing force on it. The other thing I would note on there with the bid is that they included installation removal. But we feel confident that we could do the installation. We looked at it, it's pretty straightforward. They just bolt it to the floor, and then the wires are wired to the machine, and the machine is ready to rock and roll. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer. I have Dave from the transfer station who's also here to answer any questions. The bales that we have now are original equipment. They've been there since the beginning. And I'd rather be proactive and not reactive and place them within, before they end their life instead of waiting till they end their life. And so they're familiar with the PTR, and so that's why we're recommending going with the PTR.
Do you know the age of them? I'm thinking like 30 years, based on my memory of them.
And they're original.
So and I'm sure they've lost a lot of compression, compaction.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's just they're old and they're tired, and, you know, we're doing more and more now, and we're looking to do even more. So it's time, and the city needs to be, in my opinion, the city needs to be in the space now of tracking our assets, understanding what the life cycle costs on our assets, and replacing them in a reasonable timeframe and not waiting to react when something fails and breaks down and we have to do something in an emergency. And so that's the space that I'm trying to get us to.
I have another question. If we installed it ourselves, does that lose the warranty for it?
I will have to check on that.
That's my concern.
But basically, the installation is, I think, like four bolts and connecting a wire. So, I mean, I think as long as we use a certified electrician to connect the wiring, I think we're fine, but I will obviously check on that before I pull that trigger. But yeah, that's, this is where we're at.
Councilor Smith?
I don't know what the opposite of Captain Obvious is here, but I've read through this. I don't know what we're bailing. Are we bailing cardboard? Are we bailing more?
Yes, we're bailing multiple things.
Okay. I just, okay, Steve, so still it's like, I thought maybe it would become obvious. I've zoomed in on the picture. I know that you squish cardboard. I've seen the thing. If we're spending the money.
Vertical balers, we're just using for number two plastic, the colored plastic and the natural milk jugs. So we also store the number two plastic in these vertical balers. So it's crucial that we keep them operating because we don't necessarily have the space to store the plastic somewhere. I empty the cages when the residents bring in the plastic. I empty the cages into the balers, and that's how I store the number two. For instance, like we, I use the horizontal baler for the number one plastic, and I store them. It takes 25 boxes of the big refrigerator boxes to make one bale.
Wow.
So I store all that in the back as it is right now. So it's crucial that with the age of these balers, if they're 30-plus, I use them for storage as the plastic comes in for the number twos.
And the other thing that this provides us with is that it still work. So we do have redundancy at this point. So if we have a failure, we can, we're not going to throw these away. We'll still have them.
I just felt the need to understand what it was we were buying by doing what we're bailing. So, thank you.
But I just wanted to point out that, you know, we will have these balers, and if we have an emergency, we can reemploy it if we have to.
Councilor Heller? I saw your hand was up earlier.
Could you take us to the next step? You're bailing cardboard and plastics and et cetera. Are you paying to get rid of this after that? Or are you receiving revenues? You mentioned less transportation that you're paying for.
So there's a freight charge when they come and get it. If the plastics go to Pennsylvania or New York or Canada, wherever they go, there's a freight charge that we have to cover first. So it's important to me, the PTR makes a bigger bale, so the more heavier bales and the more weight we can get on there, the more revenue we gain from the transportation costs.
But we do sell the bales to somebody.
Yes, we do sell the bales.
So you're receiving revenue for these bales. You're not paying to get rid of them?
No, we have to cover the freight charge, but we've never lost money on shipping.
And is some of this benefit because you're not paying to get rid of it through the normal process? You follow what I'm saying? If you didn't do the recycling, the cost to take it to wherever it goes, it goes up.
It would end up in trash for $92, $93 a ton.
That's where I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to understand. Okay.
So we're making money instead of costing money.
Councilor Bell?
I just want to add to that, are we still using MRA as our marketing person? So what they do is they market our recyclables. They're the ones that are doing all the research to find out what's the best option for us and what price that we can get. So, and I think it's very reasonable, I think it's like $500 a year for us to pay for that.
I think they have a coop fee too. It's like $7 a ton.
That's right.
But that's why you could end up going to Pennsylvania, you could go to Canada, it's whatever the best price is.
Yeah. Whichever mill has the best price at the time.
We talked about this briefly in the solid waste committee meeting months ago, so I don't quite remember, but I know you were playing with the numbers to try to figure out with these new balers, you could get X number of additional tonnage on for the shipment that would bring in X number of additional dollars. Do you have any sense of what that additional revenue could be? You get, you know.
So the Marason baler, which was the lowest bid, makes like an 800 to 1,000 pound bale. The PTR that we would like to get rates for 1,000 to 1,300. But the plastic bales that I've been making, I weigh every single one of them, and I've been getting about 800 to 1,000 pounds per bale.
On the old?
On the old baler.
And so it's whatever that, we don't know what that actual number figure is, whatever you would get for the bale we have to cost out instead of 1,000 pound bale, if we send them 1,300 pound bales, what does that gain us in savings and shipping and then return on investment? So we can figure that out.
Yeah. Like 200 to 300 pounds per bale, if you get 10 to 12 bales on there, times the next 20 years shelf life of the baler, it's probably significant.
If you have two that are operational, but they're at the end of their cycle, was there ever a consideration of buying one new one instead of two?
No, I think we've looked at replacing both right from the start.
Is there any value to replacing one instead of two where you have two operational?
Like I said, storage-wise, one of them's for color, one of them's for clear. There's two separate prices, and they're significant. The natural jugs were like, as of right now, the market fluctuates, but $900 a ton for the natural, $60 a ton for the colored. But as a storage, on my end, like, I don't want to store 25 full boxes of something if it does end up not working.
I guess the other answer to the question would be, so you place one, you keep an old one, then the old one breaks down, and where are you at?
That's what I'm saying.
You have two now though, right?
You have two.
We have two.
So if we looked at doing, but they're both, they're both in operation.
Right.
So if you look at putting a new one in and keeping one old one, and then the old one breaks down, I don't know how much further ahead you are.
But it hasn't broke down yet.
If you take them both, that still worked, and you put them away, and you have your new ones, then you have the redundancy still in play, whereas if one breaks down, you have to get a new one. You lose the redundancy of that baler at that time.
Any other questions from the council? How would the council like to proceed on the vertical baler question?
I would move to approve the purchase of two PTR 3400 HD vertical balers from United Hydraulics LLC for $41,900 each. Nope, combined, thank you. Funding for this purchase will be provided through the relocated ban funds.
Should we put an amendment in there based on if we can get, if the warranty holds up for that? Because we don't know right now if.
If the installation.
If the installation, right.
So we'd have to find out. So you may want to include that.
Make a motion for 44-9.
I would accept the friendly amendment, up to 44,900 if required to maintain the warranty. Thank you.
Do you have a second? For the friendly amendment?
A second.
Second? Okay. Further discussion from the council? Councilor Bell?
Do you know what we estimated for that during those?
Thirty.
We did come under on some of the other ones. Sarah has like a full accounting here.
The costs come up significantly just in a few months. I previously had quotes for 32,000, and then we budgeted for 35, but they exceeded that. And now they're 40.
Sarah, I don't know if you want to come up on some of the other pieces that did come under.
Yeah, the excavator came way under. The excavator was in for 250 in total. It was 153 in the van, and it actually is 107.
So the excavator came in under because that was a split 50% from a highway and then 50% split between wastewater and water. So we budgeted 153, 250, and so their portion, the highway portion was 107. So we have that excess funding. The contingency for Suri is less than the 307 that's in the van currently. So we have significant amount left over in the van for this.
Further comments from the council? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Mike, stay there.
You're good to go.
So we're on to number 18 on the agenda, council order number 102506, request of the Public Works Director to award the bid for a butt fusion machine.
So this is for the water department. It was a request that they made during their capital request last year. And so for people that aren't familiar with what we are talking about here, I'll give you a brief synopsis. Basically, what people are moving to in the water industry for installing water mains is a material called HDP E pipe that is easier to handle. It's approved for drinking water. And so what you look at with that is you actually have like rolls of it. And instead of like PVC or metal piping where you have either a flange that you bolt together or gasketed sections that you have to push together, the HDP E pipe, you're actually able to, with this machine, weld the pipe together at the ends. And so theoretically, you could run hundreds of feet of main and just weld it together. When you get to the end of unroll, you weld on the next roll and you can keep going. Where this is significant for us is the direction that we're trying to move in with the Public Works Department, not just in this department, but in all these sectors of the Public Works Department. Because I think, you know, we've had a lot of conversation in here tonight about taxes, and we've had a lot of conversation here about how much money people are having to spend. Well, for me, my solution to that, which I've put forth on a number of occasions, is for us to become more self-sustainable and for us to be able to cut our costs by doing stuff, more stuff in-house. So when you look at a piece of water main like Dean Street, which has had six water main breaks, I feel that, you know, our Public Works Department has the capability of replacing that main and not paying a contractor a couple hundred thousand dollars to come in and have them replace that main. And this is a critical piece that would allow us to do something like that. So in the case of, you would never be able to do something as big as the Suri Road Water Main Project. That's too big. But for these side street mains that we're having these breaks on, and we've had, I would have to say a half a dozen breaks just in the last few months already. If we can go in on these side streets and run the HDP main beside the old main, abandon the old main in place, and bring the surfaces over to the new main, and then connect the water, it's going to save the taxpayers an immense amount of money. And so I'm looking at the same thing in the solid waste. We've had multiple discussions in the solid waste committee about a path forward to cure the money we're losing in the solid waste and being able to go self-sustainable in the solid waste committee. We're building the Courthouse Road right now. Tabitha's seen the progress we've made on that. It's kind of a proof of concept that we are able to do these things. And my job is to take care of my people, give the best service to the city of Ellsworth at the best price. And so this is part of that initiative to be able to move into a space where we're not paying outside contractors, tons of money to do some of the stuff we're paying because it's getting exorbitant with the costs of contracts these days. So that's where this is coming from.
Councilor Smith?
I assume there's a timeliness issue as well, that for your crew, the city of Ellsworth is the priority versus balancing other customers?
Yes, ma'am. That's a great point, actually, because even if, like if we, like the Suri Road Water Main Project, by the time you get it funded, get it bid, get a contractor on board, find their time schedule, that project has probably been in the works for two or three years now. You know, we have time in, especially in the shoulder seasons, before winter, after winter, before we get really charged up going into summer and doing all the tasks that the city requires us to do in the summertime. And before the snow hits the ground, but after, things like the harbor closes, the Nolan Park closes, things like that. Those times of year, I believe we have the ability to pick these types of premium projects where we take the time, we plan, we work with an engineer like Andrew McCullough or somebody to make sure we're on the right track and we're doing it properly. And we go in and we do the work, and we do it on our time schedule, and we use the materials that we have available to us already in our pit and things like that, like we're doing with the Courthouse Road. And we save the taxpayers a lot of money. And that's my contribution, that's my team's contribution, that's this overarching team's contribution, because Charlie has to be on board for me to be able to be able to complete that action. that action, um, to try and help the city save money. And, but in order for me to do that, I need the right tools to do it.
Any other council questions? Counselor Allen?
So... Is it fair to say that this tool does not help you on a repair job at midnight tonight? Because that is a steel or metal pipe.
Correct.
But this tool would help you do, uh, an infrastructure update and lay the pipe
Yes.
to replace all of that street, Dean Street, you said.
Yes.
So one little bit of knowledge that I learned, and, and I don't know if I'm telling the truth here, but my understanding is you have to buy that pipe from a vendor, and they will provide this if you buy the pipe from them?
I am not aware of that.
Well, that's what I was told, that only big contractors have this. Now, maybe I'm not learning the right note here, but, um, the pipe supplier, if you buy the pipe from them, will supply this, um, in the purchase for you to do your installation or your, your plastic weld, if you will. But I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't misunderstanding, because you're not putting plastic pipe in an emergency repair, you're repairing that with steel pipe, correct? In the, I mean...
Whatever the material is.
Right, and there's not much in the ground.
No.
But you're talking about infrastructure. Has anybody asked that question about if, when you buy the pipe? Because, um, I just called a couple, and they said that they'll supply it with the sale of the, the pipe.
Yeah, I mean, uh, Reggie is not here for me to ask the question of, um, but my question would be, he had a family emergency, I believe. But I'll obviously find out the answer to that, but on the face of that, the issue I would have with that is typically if you're going to do something like that, they're going to tell you, you can have it to do this, but they're going to give you a timeframe. And if that timeframe doesn't meet our timeframe, then obviously it becomes an issue. And then the other piece I would say is if, if we go through with this proof of concept and we do start putting in HDP mains, then yeah, this could be something that we would use to repair an HDP main or put a new section of HDP main in.
Any other council questions? Counselor Stone?
Have you seen this, uh, used, this machine?
Yeah.
Around here, or other towns starting to...
Yeah. And the, the, the thing that impressed me about this particular technology is when you weld a piece of pipe together, so one of the tests that they did is you weld a piece of pipe together, and then they hooked a truck on each end of that pipe, and then they tried to pull that weld apart. They couldn't pull the weld apart. The pipe ripped before the weld ripped. I mean, it's a very robust technology.
Right, just on the, so the Courthouse Road, would that be an example of an area where you can say, okay, we want to put a new pipe?
One hundred percent.
This whole area, we want to do it cheaper with in-house services, like twenty-two miles, instead of paying somebody to come in, you've seen the road now, it's, um...
That's a great point. And not even, like, yeah, you're right, but if we wanted to pay somebody to come in, we would avoid that, but also, it's an easier install for us. Like, instead of having to haul twenty-foot pieces of cast iron pipe or steel pipe or H, uh, plastic pipe, you know, and have to, you know, fit it in a section at a time, you can literally lay hundreds of feet. You just have to dig the trench, make sure you have, uh, your layout correct, roll the pipe out, and then when you get to the end of a piece, you weld on the next piece and roll it out some more. It's, it's, uh, it's the, the way that the industry's moving.
You were just, uh, underground on Hancock Street last week digging up pipe. I'm wondering if that would have been, if you'd had this machine and pipe, if you would have taken that opportunity. It was a small section, it was maybe like twenty, thirty feet.
We wouldn't have used it in that instance, because we're just replacing the boughs in the ground there, but I'm glad you brought that up, because, um, the, one of the pipes that's in that area is AC pipe, which is asbestos concrete pipe, which we don't want.
From World War II era?
Yeah, so that would be a project that maybe we put in the works for one of our shoulder seasons to get rid of the AC pipe and put in, um...
So just to answer a couple of the questions from Reggie, um, he said it's his understanding that the contractors that sell the pipe will do the fusing, but it doesn't, it's not free. You have to pay. They, it's an extra charge. And Bar Harbor has one. They were asking if other towns had one.
Yeah.
We saw it one of them.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah.
Not sure if the Bar Harbor would help to hurt the cause here, but...
Any other questions from councils?
Patrick Shea, forty-two School Street in Elsworth. I have worked on projects in the private sector, putting in HDP E pipe. It is the coming future, okay? The machine, if you had a ten-inch fusing machine, you can re, you can, for additional cost, there's dies that you can go down in size, okay? For the pipes. Those are an additional cost, so if you run a line, and when you do this, there's some little issues that you have to watch out for. It's not the typical deal where you take, dig a trench, cut pavement, dig a trench, put a shoring box in, in the ground, and then put a piece of pipe in, and then go to the next one, belt the next one in. While the men are inside, inside the trench, using a trench box is pretty much the only time when you, uh, as you're going along, putting these forty sec, forty-foot sections of pipe together and fusing them together, which usually what we do is we do like an open pit kind of deal, and do it above ground and roll it in. But you have to make sure no one's going to walk into your trench, and the trench is safe, or you get an OSHA violation, you get lawsuits, okay? We have taken the machines apart, and the companies I work for paid big money for those machines, and I've had to repair them as a mechanic, and I've worked around being, being the operator. And we have had to take them off the carriage and put them down in and run extra hydraulic hoses and extra extension cords for the, that run the power to heat the plates up so that you can face it, clean it, heat it up, and press it together. So basically what you're doing is you're fusing, you're welding pipes, okay? And, uh, yeah, it's a pretty pricey rig. After you get, get your joint welded together, while you got it hooked to the pipe, you give it a test. And if it doesn't pull apart, and there's no abnormalities in the weld bead on the outside, the only other way to check to see if you don't have a leak, you, it's pretty much, pretty hard to test it. Typically with ductile iron pipe or, uh, Blue Brew, which is, was the latest and greatest back a long time ago in the, in the nineties for sewer lines, four sewer lines, you did an airlock test. That's a little bit different with this stuff, because now you've got to buy the flange piece, fuse that on, put a gasket, bolt it, and do an airlock test, or better yet, the hydro, hydraulic test where you pump it up so many PSI to make sure you don't have any leaks. Putting, uh, putting services on, basically you buy, you buy a saddle, stainless steel bolts and stuff, you saddle it, you, uh, hook up the drill, and it's a special one, it's different than ductile iron, and you put your corporation on, and it goes right through the corporation. And when you back that out with that core of that piece of pipe, you shut the corporation off, so no one gets wet. And then you'll find out whether you'd have a leak or not. But, um, I have seen where municipalities, even the state of Maine, you, you put a job out for a contractor, and wow, why not include a new machine with that? So once a contractor gets done doing a street, like H E Sarin, they have to provide the machine to maintain that, that line, use it on the next project, okay? It, you're getting, you're going to get a longer life out of HDP E pipe, it doesn't deteriorate like, uh, ductile iron pipe, and it, it, it's really a, a, a good deal. I can't, but on the other side, there's the cost of the machine, and you can only go within the range of the machine. So if you want to put in an, uh, an eighteen-inch line or a twelve-inch line, you're talking about buying a totally separate machine, okay? So it's something to look at. Do we really need to buy it right now? I don't want to have it warm and fuzzy.
Thank you. So a couple of things I would note. This, uh, this was projected at sixty-eight-five, and it came in at thirty-one thousand four seventy-nine. This also includes, uh, eight-inch, six-inch, and four-inch inserts, so we can choose those sized pipes. We don't have, most of our pipes are in that range, so, and, which he's, he's right when he talks about the bigger insert, I mean, they're, they're not cheap, but for us, um, eight, six, and four is pretty common for us, and they're included in this. If you look at your, the bid, the pricing from FW Web, it includes the six, and the four, and the eight in that pricing, and it's half the price of what we projected.
And this is coming from the Water Department Capital Improvement Account, which we added this year for, um, capital expenses like this, so...
And so it doesn't even affect the general fund.
How would the council like to proceed?
Move to approve the purchase of a McElroy fusion machine and associated accessories from FW Web Company in the total amount of thirty-one thousand four hundred seventy-nine dollars sixty-two cents, with funding to be provided through the Water Department Capital Improvement Account.
Second?
Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes?
Thank you.
Number nineteen, council order number one zero two five seven. Discussion of potential action on increasing water rates by one point five percent.
Good evening. Amanda Ray, Public Works Administrator, just here to request the approval of the one point five percent rate increase for the water rates effective on bills generated after March first of twenty twenty-six. Um, we've talked a little bit about how we came up with this, how we got to this percentage at the workshop, so if anybody has any questions, I'm here to help.
Thank you, Amanda, just a little more, this is kind of the, the max without having to go through a rate case change. We're going to see a lot bigger increases in potential water, um, bills after the twenty-plus million dollar water treatment plant upgrade. We've got a lot of federal, um, grants for that to help minimize the cost burden, but that's, um, there's also a lot of, um, uh, low-interest loans that are part of that financing arrangement, so the financing is secured, but, um, this is sort of a step to, um, when that project goes line, online, that debt service starts to accrue in, you know, in four years or so, that we need to start adding, um, uh, increasing the water rates so that it doesn't kind of come all at once, and it's a more smooth transition for the customer. Uh, we also talked about the workshop, too. We're going to be bringing back a consultant we've engaged on the rate case analysis, too. You know, one point five percent isn't going to be enough to smooth that, um, you know, that steep increase that's going to come. We might need to do a rate case, but there's some complications in what that rate case would do. We did, um, because the city would have to come up to thirty percent of its fire protection coverage, which would be an enormous increase, um, to our, you know, out of the general fund, either this year or next year, to kind of budget for that. And talked, you know, there was some question on, hey, well, we, that's the max, we don't have to go that, we checked out with the consultant, that you, when you do that rate case, you do have to go to that max of thirty percent, um, per the rules. So, um, you know, there's a lot of math involved in that second step of going towards a rate case, and, um, there's some exemptions we can apply for. It's extremely complicated, probably after doing an entire workshop entirely dedicated to this, um, at some point in time, so you can see how the long-term math and the debt financing on the enterprise accounts. I know we have the debt service that we talked about today, that's for the general fund. You know, I think that one was the general fund only sheet that we saw, but the, there's the separate on just how the rate payers are going to be paying for that, um, that system, that's the way the law requires it. So we'll have a much further discussion, this is just sort of a small step that, um, keeps us at the threshold to not have to do a rate case.
Counselor Smith?
If you're ready for a motion, it may be too soon.
Any discussion, questions from council? How about it?
I move to approve the one point five percent rate increase to be effective on bills generated after March first, twenty twenty-six, and that's the water rate increase.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you. Number two, agenda number twenty. Council order number one zero two five zero eight. Request of the Facilities and Parks and Recreation Director to approve the purchase of a multi-function tractor for sidewalk winter maintenance and groundwork.
Logan, I'm still riding around about Director of Parks and Recreation. So it is... So if you recall, I believe, was it the last city council meeting, or two, two city council meetings ago, um, you approved the rejection of all the bids that Highway Department received, um, for sidewalk plow. Their, their concern was nothing, the only item that came in under, uh, the hundred thousand dollar allocation, they did not feel was adequate to do the job efficiently and safely. Since then, Mike has been kind enough to push that over my way. I, through my experiences, my former employer, uh, identified a piece of equipment, um, that I know to do the job well. It's the Ventrac tractor, it's produced by Toro with a Kubota motor. There are several municipalities in the state of Maine that use this, basically to plow their sidewalks, Lewiston, Auburn, and Bates College, I'll use them, uh, for all their sidewalk plowing and walkway maintenance in the wintertime. The beauty of the tractor is, um, not only could we use it in the wintertime for sidewalk maintenance, um, but we could also purchase some turf management, um, implements, uh, that would help us utilize this piece of equipment year-round, so it wouldn't sit dormant when it doesn't snow. I did some research over the tail end of last week, in, uh, between May of twenty twenty-four and November twenty twenty-four, the city paid Natural Lawn America, which is a third-party turf management, uh, company, we paid them twenty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars for turf care around the city. Something we could very easily do in-house, um, with this same piece of equipment that we would be using for sidewalk plowing in the winter. To speak a little bit more about, uh, the method we're suggesting to procure this, uh, it would be what they call cooperative purchasing. We spoke about it at the workshop. If you guys have any questions about how that works, I'm happy to answer them. Basically, it, we potentially outsourced the whole RFP and bidding process to a verified, uh, company, Sourcewell, um, that basically goes out and procures government contracts through the power of bulk purchasing. And if you are a member, which Elsworth is, um, they've already sought out the contract and the bid, and they give you your pricing, and you're guaranteed that everything comes in below MSRP. Uh, the, the contract, in, in particular, the, this memo references, um, we will automatically get an eight percent discount, uh, below MSRP on the implement. I do have a couple of talking points if you wish to hear them, but if you just want to go ahead and move forward, I'll pause.
Uh, well, see if there's questions from council? Counselor Smith?
If we move forward, will you have one in place when the snow flies this year?
If we move forward, will you have one in place when the snow flies this year?
Yes. We did a demo with our closest vendor would be out of Lewiston, Waterman's A G and Turf. They they came last Thursday and did a demo of the equipment. Unfortunately, there's no snow on the ground, so they couldn't demo the sidewalk plow. But we saw all the other turf management implements. Had my grounds maintenance crew there, and they all agreed that the equipment could perform the tasks we're asking it to do and safely.
Counselor Heller?
I struggle with this in the fact that there was never there was identity through well source or source well. But there's there was never a model number here in this request. And so it's hard to do any research if we don't know what model number you're interested in buying. I I have the cooperative contract number, but it doesn't say the model number. So the research I did may not have fit any purpose, but I'm guessing it's an S S V.
No, I was I was looking at the forty two fifty N Pro, which is a tractor, not a stand-up machine. The S S V is like a mini Skidsteer implement.
Right.
This was this was a full-size tractor.
Enclosed cab?
It has a it has a heated winter cab that you can remove in the summer months.
Okay. It would be nice in the future to know what we're looking at because all we had is a contract number from Sourcewell. And that that
I apologize for my oversight.
Very hard to do any research. And the way this is laid out, it looks like that you're looking for permission not to go over a hundred thousand and and just pick the attachments that you want and all of that. And and you're not surprised. I'm not on board with that. I I think the bid process is the the bid process that we all should see above board. And furthermore, the we have in the all of the rejected bids, we have a taxpayer in town offering in budget a tool to do the sidewalks and other construction projects, the articulated wheel loader. I went and measured that, and it appears that it would fit just fine on the sidewalk. It was fifty four inches wide over the tires. And they had all of the attachments to go with it. They're a they're a taxpayer. There's multiple uses for this wheel loader. It's not just a sidewalk machine. As far as spreading fertilizer, you can spread that with a four-wheeler or a lawnmower. But I I struggle with this that we're looking for an approval blanket to spend a hundred grand when we have a an alternative that's a taxpayer in Ellsworth that would do many things with this little Bobcat wheel loader. And I struggle with that difficult that I don't know which one is better. Obviously, the this product looks to me more like a house use product or a homeowner product, not a commercial product over the years. And I would lean towards buying from someone that pays taxes in this town. And it's a wheel loader with all of the attachments, and it's a known price upfront as opposed to just giving a blanket authority to go spend a hundred grand. I don't like that.
Yeah, disagree with that a little bit. The last cycle, and Mike, I know you want to speak more, but there were some questions about the Bobcat and exactly to your point on if it would be able to kind of handle what we're going through, especially with Roddy's expertise in snow and a place that gets a lot more of it than we do here in Ellsworth and having to take responsibility for the sidewalk maintenance for the city, which was substandard last year and an area we really want to increase on. But also considering bringing in Roddy's other expertise in the off-season products, which they didn't have. And I think there was one, but the others were over this budgeted amount that didn't provide nearly this amount of service. But I'll leave it to Mike to maybe spread more light on that.
So I'm gonna be very narrowing my scope of conversation on this because I can speak to what I know. So we did put the sidewalk plow out to bid, and it came back. And the low bid was the Bobcat that you're referring to, and it didn't meet the width requirements that we have. But we didn't feel that other parameters were gonna be robust enough for us to rely on it long term as far as the horsepower of the motor. The sidewalks that we plow in the wintertime, a lot of the time, that's plowed snow that's pushed up onto the sidewalk. And it's heavy and it's wet. And and I actually had the conversation with Steve at the bid that we didn't think that that was an adequate machine. And so I'm not sure why he's changed his mind now. But I was actually with you during that conversation, Amanda. Oh, she left was there as well. When we looked at all the bids that we opened and said that that machine is not adequate for what we would want for the sidewalk plow. After that, it was decided that Parks and Rec was going to take on the sidewalks. And so I left it to Roddy to best decide how he wanted to move forward with that. So I'll leave that to you.
May I just ask? I never I don't believe what you just said, that I supported that motion. Secondly, again, it was very hard to do the research on this when I don't know what you're talking about. There's no model numbers. And what is the horsepower of what you're buying? Because this is a fifty seven horsepower that how much horsepower do you need to push snow?
This the conversation that we had after the bid opening, me, you, Brian, I think Amanda was there, was that the Bobcat machine was not the right machine for the job.
You may have had that conversation. That doesn't mean I agreed with it.
You instituted the conversation, but it's
I don't think we need to get back and forth. I would say that
All I can tell you is we ended up rejecting the bid. The council agreed to reject the bid. Part of the reason we rejected the bid was that we didn't feel that the Bobcat machine was adequate for the job. And then it was taken and moved on to Parks and Rec. And Roddy did his research and came back to you with what he's came back to you with.
Yeah, and Roddy and Mike, myself, we've had incredible amount of conversations about this tool and using Sourcewell, which is within our procurement policy for using cooperative service or purchasing agreements like this to get a below M S R P price. As Roddy mentioned, there's also capabilities for turf maintenance that are really unique to this product, that it's gonna save us some money in, you know, thirty, forty thousand dollars that we're putting out already. You know, we have winters fast approaching, winters coming, as they say in the TV shows. And, you know, we tabled last time around because we wanted the best product at a, you know, a good price. This is that. We'd like to move forward.
Yeah, and then this product, the Bobcat, was almost a hundred thousand, and it doesn't do any of the turf maintenance requirement, right? And then you said Lewiston, Auburn, and Bates use this model for their snow removal.
There's tons of trail maintenance pieces, you know, and with Roddy has and Parks and Rec really developing tools that are, you know, designed to get as much use year round as possible.
Sounds good to me. Is there a motion from the council?
There are so many words in this motion, but I'm happy to
You can do it, Nancy.
Move to authorize the purchase of the Ventrac multi-function tractor and related attachments for winter sidewalk maintenance and year-round grounds operations through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract, Number One One Two Six Two Four Dash T T C Dash Two Toro Ventrac, to approve the expenditure of funds for the previously allocated hundred thousand dollars equipment appropriation for this purpose and to direct staff to obtain a formal dealer quote through the Sourcewell contract and proceed with procurement in accordance with the city's purchasing policy, provided the total cost does not exceed the approved budget. Score.
Anyone for a much shorter second?
Second.
Second.
Account, the funding account, source of funding?
Is the the unallocated bond or ban ban funding. So it's the same as the the prior one. The reallocated ban funds.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you, Roddy.
And if it if it helps, I can provide some more detail after the fact so you know exactly what you're getting.
Okay, I'm fine.
Great. Agenda Item Number Twenty One, Council Order Number One Zero Two Five Zero Nine, Discussion and Potential Action on the excess proceeds from the twenty twenty foreclosure and twenty twenty three auction of sixteen Fifth Street, sponsored by Councilors Lyons and Stein.
Yeah, I know, you guys know. This is your your agenda.
Yeah, this is a long time issue. My first council meeting three years ago was this had been going on for a couple of years before that. When I joined the council, there were some votes to accept or, as happened, not accept any of the bids on the then foreclosed upon Karst property. A month or two later, we sent it out to private auction company. Proceeds came back. We hadn't seen it or heard of it since then until until recently it came back up. So the issues, some of the issues at hand were there wasn't necessarily a legal avenue for returning funds. This was after the Supreme Court case requiring that that cities give any proceeds back to foreclosed upon estates.
You mean before?
Yeah, before that decision came through. So the question was, is the city able to do that if we wanted to? What would be the routes? What would be the legal implications? So a couple of months ago, I tried to get in touch with the Karst family. I contacted them through all the contacts we had in the city through the tax department, et cetera. Was not able to get in in contact, unfortunately. But I was able to talk to several city staffers and other council, almost every council member, to sort of put heads together and figure out what would be the next steps. So Charlie then met with legal counsel to figure out what would be the implications. Would this open up a proverbial bag of snakes, you know, and and we may be liable then for repaying all of these other funds? How many other funds were there in the real estate fund? Where was the real estate fund? Where did it exist? How much money was in there? Can a city even give money to a public entity or a person? Is that legal? Well, not really. And if we want to do it, what would be the reciprocal, basically, public good for doing that? And we need to be able to show something like that. So I met with Counselor Chair Lyons, who's obviously a legal expert, not necessarily in this. But we put we put heads together and tried to figure out what next steps would be.
Yeah, I think, thanks, John. You know, it's a complicated issue, and we're not the only town in Maine or across the country that's been dealing with it. And the long short of it is that the city has been followed the state statute the entire time as required. The city did not have the legal authority to return the funds. And, you know, that's the that's the rub here is right is that you have to have a public purpose never in order to expend public funds. And in August, when we tabled this the first time, it was based, you know, and I we were talking about it. At the time, we had received, you know, a memo from our legal counsel saying that we did not have the authority to return the funds. And, you know, we, as a council, when we, you know, come to office here, we swear an oath to uphold the laws of this federal, you know, of the nation, of the state, and of the town. And the matter, there's, you know, there's a matter of wanting to do it. There's a matter of can we do it? And I couldn't in good conscience vote to take a step that my understanding was was not legal. That said, it was tabled. And obviously, there's been more attention put on this issue. And the, you know, in doing, you know, the city had to turn back to its attorneys because it seemed as if now the there's more risk to the city depending on outside influences. But again, the whole goal has been to figure out what we can do legally. And then with that understanding, bring this back to the council to take next steps. So in doing so, I know our legal counsel conducted extensive research on a very, very complicated issue with pending lawsuits in multiple states. And there is a significant potential downside risk to the city that we had to look into. It was bigger than one property. And I'm very thankful that our very capable city attorneys did an excellent analysis and really dug in. And then I think ultimately have determined that the one public purpose we could point to to return these funds is through the settlement process with, in this instance, the Karst family. And having learned that and understanding that now that the city can proceed to negotiate with the Karst family in part to resolve any potential dispute in the future by entering to a settlement agreement where they would waive any future claims against the city in return for payment back to them of the equity. I'm in full support of that. I think it's, you know, it's a great, again, it's consistent with the Supreme Court decision that came out after the city went through, properly followed the foreclosure process at that time. Knowing we have this ability now through the settlement negotiation, I think it's my opinion is that the city should pursue that for a variety of reasons. One, because it limits the city's liability. And two, it's following the spirit of the Supreme Court case. And I think it's the right thing to do. So I would be in support of adopting the suggested motion that was provided by Manager Pierce. And I think it's a good way to move forward on this issue.
Counselor Heller?
After discussion, just to clarify, it wasn't tabled. It wasn't seconded. I made a motion that nobody seconded. And I I thank you for everybody diving in and trying to find ways to resolve this sad issue. When you're ready for a motion, I would like to read a motion.
Read a motion?
Yes. When you're ready for a motion, I would like to make a motion.
To make the motion?
Yes.
I'm ready.
Okay. Any comments?
Hello, Kristin Schleifer, four forty eighth Fifth Street. I'm just wondering, you mentioned how many other, what was in the real estate fund? And how many other cases like this does it open the city up to if we return this money to the Karst family through the settlement process?
You know, I usually with, I think, with the comment on these, it's sort of a for or against. But I was just about to hand that out. So I will answer that. I know I don't like to get too many back and forth, but it's one piece. That was one of the things we were waiting on. I'd just like to know, to me, I'll let you give some comment to so if there's anything in there at the end.
Rebecca Maddox Wilber. I grew up with with Carrie Karst. And I just wanted to say, someone got an award tonight for fifty years of service for the fire department. Carrie's mom was the crossing guard for the children of the Moore School for decades. Decades. I don't even know if she got paid for that job. And her husband was a wonderful, dear, sweet, kind man. And Carrie Karst is a gem of a person. Now, he supposedly, and I read something, read recently, that he supposedly said, it's okay, go ahead, you know, I can't pay it. But but my question is, is this a community or is this a business? And I understand there's always the fear of liability, and we're gonna get sued for this, we're gonna get sued. And I understand there's always the fear of liability and we're going to get sued for this, we're going to get sued for that. But it has always bothered me and I've always, always watched the foreclosures and thought to myself, how many years of lifeblood was spent on that? And they lose it in one, two or three years' time of taxes, it depends, community to community. And if you sell it and you make a profit and you get your expenses back, why shouldn't they get their money? That was their home. And he's an only child and their pa- and his parents are long gone, he's a couple of years older than me. And I say, if you can make it right, make it right. Because this po- this practice of taking people's property over a handful of money, which is taxes for a few years compared to what they've put into it, is an abomination. So if you can fix it, God bless you, please do. That's a good family and he should get back what there was for equity past the, the city's expenses. That's my opinion.
Yeah. I, uh, I don't think there's a counselor up here that wants to see something like that happen again. I'm, I'm happy that the courts passed this a couple of years back. Um, yeah, the issues were just, can we do it? How do we do it? There wasn't anything written. The staffer's hands were tied because once the foreclosure process happens, there's a very specific and strict set of rules that, that happen in a very specific timeline that gets set. By the time it got here to council, there were very few things we could do. Um, and it took a lot of work and it took a lot of effort. Um, you know, I, I know we don't want to be too squeamish about litigation and things, but, you know, we have an obligation of the city as well to make sure that, that we're doing things the right way and we're doing things, um, the legal way. Um, so all that work, you know, transpired and, and here we are. And I'm, I'm very, gonna be very happy to, to vote for this.
Yeah, and I guess to, in some ways to both your points, those are kind of two of the cruxes of the issues. Um, uh, which is, you know, uh, yeah, I've, it's been a very difficult few weeks, um, for myself and for members of the staff. Um, we've had people who, you know, sta- the staff had nothing to do with this, nothing to do with this. They've executed the will of the city council over and over and over again to the letter of the law. In some ways, too closely to the letter of the law because we couldn't overturn it upon investigation on the way that they were doing the right thing. So I know our tax collectors don't like to collect taxes. They, um, that's part of the process of, um, how we pay for this government. Um, and it's, uh, you know, there've been public works employees that have been yelled at on the street saying, called thieves, um, while they're working on a job site. We've had people in City Hall getting, um, mean angry calls saying, you stole that money or give that money back. As if any of the people in this, but myself included, some friends this weekend, like, why'd you steal those people's money? And I'm just, I have to explain. I'm sorry. Like, let me run, to me, one of the issues that's present here is the fact that, you know, the actual facts. Let me bring you back. This was leaned on twenty nineteen for unpaid taxes. Um, it was, uh, you know, it was, uh, twenty nineteen, two different times, uh, put in the registry of deeds, the notices in twenty twenty, um, for their forty-five thirty day notice or foreclosure notices, a redemption letter in twenty twenty, a council meeting in twenty twenty-two. And so there's, there's a council meeting, this is previously decided, where this could have happened. I got, I don't know, I don't know, I wasn't there for those council meetings where, was there this level of antagonism to the council that passed, um, this to sell the property? Now, they didn't have a policy in place to reimburse the money? We could have changed that policy. It's like, I look back at previous councils, like, I wish when we said we don't have a policy in place to, that's not the right thing to do. And to your point on, I'm glad the Supreme Court got it right, um, that, yeah, we shouldn't be keeping my. I also do, we don't want to be in the business of selling people's houses at all. Um, you know, that's, the surplus should go back to them, but we also don't want to have a process that, hey, I don't want to pay the taxes on that piece of property, I don't walk away from it. That's not what happens in almost every circumstance. We have abatement processes, we have hardship processes, we, our folks in our, our office want to work, you know, whenever anybody has a hardship as much as possible. But we, we also can't work if they're not responding to, um, letters, if they're not responding to contacts, if they're not responding to legal documents. To this day, I haven't, I haven't heard from the family. If, if this is authorized, that's one, one of the reasons I'm hopeful this will be authorized. It'll give me, um, you know, direction from the city council to start moving to speak with this family right before this. I don't, I don't even know why, what I would say. Um, I don't, there's a previous city council passed this. Um, you know, they, they, it's just they, but made a motion to sell the property, they dropped the bids, they brought the bids back, and then all of a sudden it's, there was a, a news article that was shared online widely, and I think a lot of people believed saying that the city council sold this house last month. Um, and I think that in some ways, a lot of people are here with like, oh, why did you guys do? Why did this council do that? Why did the staff do that? And they kind of get this misinformation and it ends up, you know, with city employees that work super hard, uh, to have to do this again. So to your point on like the reparations part of this, so it's the count, the Supreme Court ruling isn't necessarily retroactive. Um, so what reparations need to be made to the people, like the, down to the Karst family that, um, under previous legal, uh, guidance from the city and also from the state is now changed. Um, and to your point on what's the full legal liability, um, and, you know, it, that's kind of part of the reason we're in this now, um, is I, I could say, I've done the research there. We're looking at, there's a lot of timeshares that seems to be in total. Like, is it every single timeshare that has fifty dollars too much made or not enough made that we need to go through each piece? Um, you know, that's not a huge amount. Um, it's in like the eight thousand category. There's about fifty thousand net liability on the total other sales that might be in that category. So we're not looking at, um, there's some states that have put together trust funds of tens of millions of dollars to try to deal with this because this was such a prevalent nationwide exercise. And I can't in good conscience put the city of Ellsworth into a financial capacity where it's like, hey, you establish a precedent and now current taxpayers are going to have to pay back fifty, a hundred years of these pieces to kind of pay reparations for the change in law. So, um, I, I think this is illegally justifiable and at the public purpose that the, um, we can't just say, we don't like that previous statement from the city council, we don't like that it was three years ago they did this, we want to give this money back, that could be considered a private purpose. We can't just, um, but the public aspect too, we may be facing a lawsuit on this piece. Um, uh, and, you know, in order to secure release on that, like, I'm not looking, I don't think anybody wants Ellsworth to be the sample case to take it all the way to the Supreme Court. We might win that. And whether you feel like, yes, this should be what we do or no, it shouldn't be, like, this case is defensible. And I'm sure I'll get a lot of flack tomorrow and maybe some of you too for like, you shouldn't have, you know, this is going to be real taxpayer money from now too. We're gonna have to, that's the next step when I, um, hopefully am able to talk with the Karst family about, um, writing this issue, you know, where is the money going to come from? Um, we have some reserve account funding they might be able to consider. We could maybe consider future tax revenue to sort of put it as a liability, like an abatement or with, um, how we do some of those issues with the overlay next year. Um, but we are going to have to find a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and that's, you know, that's, that's not nothing. Um, so we've done a lot of due diligence now. I, I think I'm ready to also be in support of this motion. Um, and just wanted to thank the staff and everybody for, um, really kind of taking the lion's share of the brunt of, um, the kind of public pushback here. And, uh, but we always stay anchored in purpose. I'm talking about our team all the time. We're staying anchored in purpose, um, and we're best in class and we take personal responsibility for the success of the organization, whether it was some previous council or whether it's right now. Like, that's our job to, you know, provide options to the council and do the right thing moving forward. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Charlie. Counselor Helen, you said you wanted to make a motion?
I do, and, and for clarity, there was a suggested motion and so I'm not clouding the waters. I thought I would hand every counselor that so they could read that, so you could see what the, the difference is. Um, so you're not guessing. So the, the above, um, motion was just copied and pasted from the agenda. And I, I made an amendment, um, to clarify. Hopefully you'll support this. This is about fairness to me. It's not about legalities, it's about fairness. So I would move to authorize the city manager to execute a settlement agreement with Kerry Karst, personal representative of the estate of Kenneth H. Karst, which is his dad, and the prior owner of sixteen Fifth Street, to refund the surplus proceeds in the amount of a hundred and seventeen, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm just giving the legal counsel that.
I should have thought of that, I'm sorry. I'll start over. Move to authorize the city manager to execute a settlement agreement with Kerry Karst, personal representative of estate of Kenneth H. Karst, the prior owner of sixteen Fifth Street, to refund surplus proceeds in the amount of one hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred seven dollars and ninety-nine cents plus six percent interest from the sale of the property. Provided that the city obtain a full release of all claims arising from the foreclosure and sale of the property, number two, providing that the agreement ensures the property title remain clear, clean and marketable. And number three, the prior owner agrees to release all remaining claims or interests in the property to the current owner, either directly or indirectly through a release of the city. Release to the city, excuse me. And a side note, I believe number three has already been done. That's still a condition.
Would it give our attorney a, a, a brief little bit to kind of read it and then maybe provide some context?
I have a thought, just, you know, Steve, obviously the, the differences you clarified, the previous owner's estate, which I think is a great addition, um, and you've put in the specific amount with interest. Um, I have concerns about putting in a specific amount, um, knowing how, um, settlement discussions go. Um, the, uh, I think we want to, the intent is to provide the, you know, the motion as drafted before was to, was to provide the surplus proceeds, um, in any applicable interest. But the, when you go into a, you know, a negotiation with another party, um, going in with just this number potentially can complicate and we might have to come back and get further, um, uh, you know, another vote. Um, again, this is also a complicated issue. It's still working its way through the courts. Um, I, again, I'm a hundred percent in support of returning these proceeds to the Karst family. Um, I just don't want to put a specific number in there that limits our ability to, you know, to successfully resolve this. Um, so that, that's my concern and that's why, um, I was more supportive of a motion that just, just makes clear we're returning these proceeds, uh, but not putting a number on it and potentially complicating and limiting the city's ability to do this.
Do you hear from the attorney?
Good evening, uh, Tim P. is, uh, city attorney. And I, I think I echo what the chair is saying. It, it, um, when you put a specific number on the table, then that's, that's the number that you're going to end up with. Unless the other party says, I want more, and then you're going to be coming back here and having further discussions. So there's, there's, um, flexibility in the first motion if it's reasonable. And I think, I wanted to just take a moment to expand upon the, the sequence of events, uh, that led to this. So the, the sale at auction occurred at the very end of March in twenty twenty-three and then the Supreme Court issued its decision in, two months later, uh, in May of twenty twenty-three. And shortly thereafter, the state amended, uh, Title Thirty-Six, which is the, the tax, um, title. And it discussed what municipalities were supposed to do in these situations now. And it, it said, you've got to return, uh, the surplus. And basically, you can't, the city can't keep money above and beyond what taxes were owed minus expenses. So the state statute now talks about how to define surplus. So it's the sale proceeds in excess of a number of certain categories of items. In other words, you take the excess and you subtract all of the, the costs associated with the, uh, taxes that were, uh, owed, um, and so forth, and all the fees that are associated with addressing the property. So, uh, I was jotting down a suggested motion. What would I, uh, s- do if, if you asked me for a particular motion? And I think one way to think about it is authorize to negotiate a settlement not to exceed, uh, the surplus from the sale minus the allowable expenses as set forth in this, uh, statute. So that gives you some, uh, room to negotiate, especially when we have a party that we don't know what their willingness to negotiate is. There's any number of reasons why a, a party in a, in an estate situation may not want a certain amount of extra money. There could be tax consequences, you might have to reopen probate and so forth. So we don't know those things. So because we don't know them, having the city manager have some flexibility around it might be beneficial to actually resolve the situation and not have to come back here in the future.
I'd also just, I, this is just kind of a point of clarity too. I think those are good edits. Um, again, I've, nobody's had contact with the Karst family and I, I know I have seen something about you, uh, are, are you, you've tried to hire a lawyer for them or you are acting as a lawyer? That's the other piece I know is here, is like, who am I negotiating with, um, in this piece? Or that this Kerry Karst, PR estate, Kenneth H. Karst? I mean, these are things that are, if you'd like them to be there, I could see them being there, but I, I also have no frame of reference. I think that's what have been the difficult part about this is I don't have like another party that I even know what their interests, I've, to your point, uh, citizen's point earlier, there was a news quote on, was the last, um, piece of that. I'm sure that once I move forward, I could go through this and I could, this could be exactly who I need to work with. But I don't, I don't know that now. I haven't been working with an attorney or a specific member of the Karst family. Um, so if you say that, Steve, that's the appropriate person to put me in touch with that's representing this property. Uh, you, I, I could see that being in there, but I also don't know that unless you tell me that you, you are acting, um, you know, as a representative of the Karst family and have been in touch with them and their attorneys and this is what they would like, you know, who, who I, you would like me to be negotiating with. I just don't know.
I've been in touch with the Karst family ever since this happened. But I could not speak for the Karst family. Myself. But Mr. Karst is the personal representative and he also is the person on all of the paperwork from the city. Gotcha. Um, and the. My fear in my motion is this. I, I want this man to get all of his equity and that's the reason I want that number in there. Um, if you, i- if in good faith you feel that, um, maybe you could set that as a minimum if what you're talking about is perhaps you have to pay more. I don't think so, but maybe. Um, I just don't want, um, this to get turned into, um, negotiations where this guy is, is not getting his true equity. That's my interest.
I think the language in the original motion.
Sorry.
Can we say something?
Yeah. Yeah, I was sorry, tax collectors, tax collector slash city clerk, a lot of people wear a lot of hats. Sue wears both of them.
So, um, I had no intention of coming up here and talking. And this is not been fun. This has been a very, very hard, I don't know however long this has been going on, but the worst of it has been these last few weeks. And I've been personally attacked, I've been yelled at, I've been accused of stealing money. I mean, it goes on and on and on and on. Beyond that, I have no problem with them getting the money back if we can do it legally. But we also need to keep in mind that there are now additional legal fees that I think should be deducted from that amount. And I don't think that they should, um, just be given a, a blank check or, uh, this is what it was at the time that we, we sold it. Um, this is the amount of the surplus, that's what they get back. There are additional fees. And as long as those fees are deducted from it, and I don't, I couldn't tell you what they are right now because I don't, I don't know, but I know for a fact there are additional fees. And I've not had time to pull all of that together, partly because I've been fighting off everybody. But I just wanted to make that clear, there are additional fees. So that amount that, Steve, that you're There are additional fees, so that amount that, Steve, that you're trying to put on there is not going to be an accurate amount. And I don't think that we should have to pay the legal fees for all of that. I think it should come out of that money. That's, that's my opinion. It's probably not popular, but I'm not a popular person, so.
Thank you. And Sue's put in an enormous amount of work that, you know, again, I think we all could have wished that the council would have made a different decision back then and didn't put this on staff, and then also that the way it came back about, you know, I think made it seem as though, you know, Sue and staff just decided, hey, we should grab this money. And it's like so wildly inaccurate, and it was hurtful to staff, and I just deeply apologize for not being able, I tried to do some, some radio conversations, and there was a few news stories on it in the Vanguard Daily News and the Ellsworth American, that, you know, it's a complicated issue. But that piece on the funding, too, I, you know, and there's a piece, Steve, I get you, I kind of want to move beyond. There's also, like, there was no, there was no response made for multiple years. It took a ton of staff time to get it here. We don't, we don't want to be in this business at all. And I'm more of the inclination, I know this isn't popular, we, too, that we, but that we need to, we need to move forward and, you know, if you're authorizing me as a political element or as a legal element to negotiate the best possible position, like, that's, yeah, putting a number, putting these other pieces wouldn't necessarily be what we should do. But this is clearly with the amount of, like, frustration to staff and others, to the taxpayer, it's a hard thing. If, if we're going to have six more signs outside, running around City Hall, honking their horns at the people who work here as they work all day long, to have to live under conditions where a new sign is put on a new truck saying, the city only paid back a hundred and five thousand dollars, it should have been a hundred and seventeen thousand nine oh seven, and shame on you, and you stole this money, and I, and me and the staff have to, I mean, Sue put it, worked all weekend, twenty-five hours is what she's put in to get in this spreadsheet, so I could say that, you know, we're not going to be in huge financial limbo here with the city.
Actually, probably closer to fifty.
Yeah, that was the conservative one. We went through each number.
Fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand is the potential liability of the other properties since two thousand and fifteen.
I wasn't sure if that was the number that you were giving. I'm comfortable with fifty thousand, so please give the Karst family all the...
And again, these are general estimates, and that's why this piece, too, is a negotiation of the Karst family for the public purposes of the release, so that we don't have to move forward in this piece. I mean, that, that is not an all-inclusive, this was a very deep dive into our systems to get here. It is, you know, once I would negotiate and discuss with the Karst family this piece. And there's other pieces on terms of the title, in terms of how the sale went from one to another, on how that, if there's any funds exchanged in those areas, and my limited land experience here in Ellsworth, but I have had some, you find out some interesting things when you go through the title process. So I, I am interested in council kind of maybe just giving guidance on that. You know, I do think the, the funds plus interest is what we should give. That's what's in the first statement, and I'd bring it back, but there may be a few things that we could talk about in executive session, but the actual dollar figure will be known with the settlement back to the Karst family. That's not a, that's not a non-public record, but there is a piece of me, too, that's just, I owe it to the taxpayer to get the least amount, but also there's a righting this wrong moving forward, and that seems to be at the one seventeen plus interest. And I know Sue, for all the time and work and effort and legal fees, there is two sides to this one, but I feel like we go forward with the one seventeen nine oh seven plus interest, and maybe there could be a caveat in there as well, but.
Well, it's not up to me, but I, I think that, I think all the fees that have come up because of this issue should be covered from that. I don't think the taxpayers should have to pay for those legal fees or any of the other fees, but before I say something I'm going to regret.
No, thank you, Sue, as always. I should also note that Sue in our management meetings is always the person that, I know as a, as a manager, you can always, in authoritative positions, you'll say, hey, this is the plan, like, isn't it great? And everybody just kind of shakes their hand, yes, but if you could put the word cloud, they'd be like, this is crazy, we shouldn't do that. Sue, thank God, is always the person that'll be like, no, like, we need to have another side here. And here is the other side, and we're all the better for it, so.
I think we've discussed this issue enough.
I just, I'd just like to say one thing. It wasn't Sue's fault. Sue's just following her, what she's supposed to do.
Thanks.
So there's nothing Sue did wrong.
Thanks, Gordon.
There's nothing that Sue did wrong. What went wrong was during the closed bid process. The low bid wasn't taken. That's where it went wrong, when you didn't take any bids. That's where it started. Rest of it's on the city, because there's no reason why they couldn't accept it, that low bid.
I, Gordon, I agree with you. I was part of that vote, and I, it was my first meeting, and I, I believe that I voted the wrong way. It was a split vote, and the low bid was a Karst bid, and that would have been quick. It was actually a suggestion that I had made as well previously, as a citizen commenting. And, yeah, that's partly why I'm sort of a little quixotic about this and wanted to find a legal way to...
And Steve, maybe you can kind of split the, I know, to hear what you're saying, Sue, and kind of what you're saying, Steve, it's just like, I kind of considered things before then, legal fees or whatnot to be included, analyzing the interest, but anything that happened, like, when the city decided to go to the sale process, like, that was all the city, went in, it went out, like, I wouldn't want to charge anybody for all that bad process, those other things. But beforehand, you know, some of the legal fees that happened, where we're in now, that's just, you know, my time, that twenty-five hours from Sue, like, I wish I could get that back. It came from other projects. It came from cannabis, it came from digital modernization efforts that we want to do. It, you know, there was a ton of, it just, you know, we work so hard here. I mean, I can't tell you how flat-out people are, and so we had fifty percent turnover over three years, half, which is why I get a little bit hot when there's, you know, complaints about the deputy city manager being the cost overrun for the city, the huge cost of fifty percent turnover in the organization and the institutional knowledge lost, and when we stopped having a deputy city manager and we put two hats on one city manager and three hats on five different people, and half the organization fled, like, dead in the harvest costs. Multiple audits behind, unreconciled accounts, and this issue is really important, but I got a lot of those other big issues, unreconciling accounts, on getting our fund gone a long way. Got it to two point nine percent after a year of a eight percent increase, of a seventeen percent size of government increase. And I want to spend a lot more time over the next three or four months tackling those big, big issues to, you know, tackle our infrastructure, tackle all the capital improvement planning, and kind of get beyond this piece. So maybe the compromise here, Steve, is, you know, your suggested motion, I think it's fine, it's, you know, there might be some flexibility when I look at the interest on, you know, legal fees prior to the city foreclosure sale, if we could include that or if that's not acceptable to you.
If I can interject, Charlie, I think the original motion works because it says surplus proceeds, and that's the process that the new statute has you apply, is surplus means backed out any applicable costs. So, and I trust your judgment and our legal counsel's judgment in determining what those costs are, and then that gets you to the surplus. So I, I would like to proceed with the suggested motion as written, unless legal counsel, you may have suggested something to, an amendment to the language, I didn't catch it.
If, if your thinking is that you want to actually apply that definition, then I would suggest that in the original motion, you would say surplus proceeds as set forth in thirty-six MRS A nine forty-three dash C.
Nine forty-six dash C?
Oh, nine forty, nine forty-three dash C.
And Steve, if you'd be willing to make that motion, too, I can say, well, obviously, it'll be finalized in probably executive session, which would be the place to go with this, but my promise to you and my, what my expectation would be, which would be if I see some legal fees in that prior to the sale, but that the interest would be accruing till the date that we're at, that we're not going to end the interest in twenty twenty-three, that the interest would be carrying over from the surplus funds to today, backed out for any potential legal fees from the prior year.
So I made a motion, and like in August, I believe the chair could ask if there's a second, and if there's not, it will die, and you can start over.
So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Seeing no second, motion doesn't carry. Would anyone like to suggest a motion?
Mr. Chair, move to authorize the city manager to execute a settlement agreement with the prior owner of sixteen Fifth Street to refund surplus proceeds as set forth in thirty-six MRS A thirty, three, nine forty-three dash C, plus any applicable interest from the sale of the property on terms the city manager deems reasonable, provided that the city obtains a full release of all claims arising from foreclosure and sale of property. The agreement ensures that the property title remains clear, clean, and marketable. The prior owner agrees to release all remaining claims of, or interest in the property to the current owner, either directly or indirectly through a release to the city.
Second?
Second.
Before we vote, just want to read a statement. Steve, your consistent support for the Karst family is admirable and shows care and respect for the family. I just ask that you share the same care and respect for the hard-working city staff and your fellow counselors. Your very public and undeserving casting of shame and accusations of theft on the city is causing unnecessary division in our community and has led to people harassing city staff, as you've heard here tonight. They are dedicated public servants that have only followed the law and did nothing wrong to deserve that treatment. We would have reached the same resolution tonight if you had reached out to your fellow counselors and asked to work with us to continue exploring options, as we have done so tonight. I see your suggested new trailer. I don't want any more trailers. Next time, just call me. This is a council thoughtful people who have been diligent in taking the time that is necessary to get to the legal and right decision for this matter. That is our duty as counselors, to serve the citizens of Ellsworth while upholding the laws of our nation, state, and city. All those in favor of the motion? So moved.
Unanimous?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks. Please, no more trailers.
Council order number twenty-something. Council order number one zero two five one zero. Discussion potential action of the dissolution of the assessing department upon execution of a contract with an assessing contractor and appointment of the contractor as city assessor.
Thank you, Chair. This is a difficult conversation. I, you know, I, I've thought long and hard about this process. I know in FY twenty twenty-five, I, you know, last year, we kind of came to this process, and we relate to the tax commitment pretty significantly, so much so that we actually had sent out tax bills to, that, with due dates that had already passed. And to me, there was something, you know, and this was, I'd come in halfway through the budget process, you know, three years of unaudited accounts and backlog in those audits, we're caught up on those audits. Now, I know there were some citizen comments about that today as well, no, no budgeting, I mean, you all, many of you were here for that budget process. It was a binder and fifty million dollar budget, just, you know, pieces of paper being put in there. It seemed like the, the day of the meeting or even fifteen minutes late into the meeting on what I was watching, we worked insanely hard to get the budget online, digital, line by line, even in that budget process. And then it was like, you do all that work over the line, and then the commitment, which is this total separate valuation piece, comes in late, and then, you know, you essentially send out bills that are showing that the city, like, isn't meeting the mark. So we put some process improvements to the place to hope that that wouldn't happen again. I think I sat through a few finance committee meetings to talk about those, and that it wouldn't happen again, and I, it's, this is on me. I apologize to the cities of Ellsworth and the citizens. This year, we, we changed the, the interest accruing deadline this year, so at least we didn't send out tax bills late again to the, that, with due dates that had already started accruing interest, but they were later, and we have some debt service issues that we need to get through, and, and, you know, I should have, we, we had a long discussion in finance committee meetings about just some internal process changes we made during that process. We hired consultants to help us get it over the line. We brought in our internal resources in our code office to do sort of base level measurements, and, but even, myself and the deputy city manager were in multiple weekly meetings to get it over the line. We were setting up trackers for how many properties and personal property look into on, I learned a lot about the assessing processes by having to dive in that deeply into it. And we promised after that discussion, we had a discussion in finance committee meeting, that we'd continue to look at our internal process improvements, as we've done with our budget. We're a lot better on our budgeting processes now, but we're still trying to make edits to make them more perfect, that I would do so with the assessing process, too. From my research into both some internal process edits we could make, I also had noticed that other cities and towns are going towards a contractor model for their city assessing services. And I also, you know, it's, a lot of the growth in city government, this is one of the big ones. We've gone from one point one billion to one point seven billion in valuation over the last five years. That's from going from a one billion to one point one billion from twenty-nine to twenty twenty. And so in terms of like the growth of the city of Ellsworth, you know, that's been harder and harder to keep up with. And so I'm still pursuing process improvements. I, you know, I would hope to be able to do better on the tax commitment, but it's also not just the getting the bills out on time, it's the actual valuation, you know, to meet those ninety percent thresholds of what the state requires of your full state valuation. So your Bette reimbursements, your personal property tax event reimbursements, your home stead comes back to your full levels. And then I think we had a valuation estimate of around five percent, and had, you know, we had a lot of conversations, how do we get better forecasting of what the actual valuation increase is going to be? And, you know, we need better services there as well. And having researched a fair amount of other pieces, I felt that was incumbent to, you know, I take it very seriously whenever something could be considered for outsourcing, but that there were other organizations that do this in, that are very like to the city of Ellsworth, and that I should, you know, I owed it to the city, to the taxpayer, that we need to do a better service here, and can it be done for at or lower than our current price point in order to improve services? Because I'm also looking at, do we hire additional staff in the department? Do we do additional training in the department? Do we employ additional staff resources, which are already maxed out, because growth in the city isn't just relative to this piece? And, you know, our tax collector, our IT department had to do an enormous amount of work off, you know, off their workload for when the tax commitment comes in, that we need that in the June timeframe much earlier. So when I looked at the proposal, we only received one, there was somebody, the group expects interest, but this is also, it seems like one of the only ones in the area. It, it seems like it would allow us to move forward and get better service, a little bit of a change of service. It'll probably mean that we have one full-time employee here that's sort of manning the desk area for assessing services, but also having a little bit of code. We're going to do a little bit of a restructure of backfill on the code department, so that this could be essentially a contract out, but a reduction of two full-time employees as well. I don't, I don't enjoy that part of the process, but well, sometimes I do feel like we need to add employees in specific areas where really only the city can do this type of work. If there's contracting firms that we can do it at a cheaper cost for, you know, with consulting firm that has expertise and vision, this software, and has done it for cities like Belfast and Orono, Ubeck, and others, that I owe it to discuss and to move forward if the council isn't agreeing with my proposal. So that's, that is where I'm at.
Any questions for the city manager from council? I, I have one. Have you talked to any other municipalities that are using this model? And what did they tell you about it?
Yep, this model and this, this firm, and that, that it's, it's been excellent. And, you know, it's the way, you know, they're somewhat local. Again, I wish I had two or three to go by, and then we could judge others, but this isn't the first time in this part of Maine where you get one proposal on this. We did put it on MMA's site with the, and then we also think reached out to a lot of the other ones in the state site that do this type of work, so, yeah. And this also, just for a customer perspective, you know... And this also, just for a customer perspective, you know, this, the city's official certified assessor would be here on potentially one day or more as needed to book those appointments in those hours, but we'd still have, you know, general information on assessing and services from an internal staff resources. And this in some ways is also going to give us, like, these folks do great work. We did this, it was the contractor that we helped with us to get our assessing piece over the line. He was late still, but could have been much later if we didn't get in there. I think it's always good to have a contractor or consultant that does this in many different parts of the state and other cities and towns, that they can kind of apply best practices, learn from all those pieces, and do a real analysis of our process to be, you know. I, in some ways, have been looking at this as maybe even a half-step of that. We go to this group just to have them revamp our pieces as well. But now, we don't have the funding for that type of thing. It's, it would be much more cost-effective for the taxpayer to go to an outsourced service with, with this model, as opposed to bringing on them, which we don't have the funding for already.
Could you give us a brief, just draw a picture of the current, I think it's a three full-time staff employees would be working on this and then juxtapose that with the new model?
It's, it's two full-time staff in the assessing area, the city's assessor and assessing assistant. And then there's a code assistant that, you know, recently left the organization. So it's one of the reasons I'm kind of bringing it now, is there's an opportunity. It's, I believe, there previously in the city, there was kind of one person in the code assessing and planning off that kind of, Sam Tammy's nodding, so I assume that was true, that kind of managed that whole piece, is like the front desk for those things with the city assessor. This would kind of be going back to that model, except we'd be outsourcing the official city's assessor to come in and not backfilling the additional code role. So there'd be a little bit more of a code, a central focus on assessing and helping with management and consultant and those types of expert questions on assessing. But, you know, it's a big team effort up there in code planning, economic development, assessing. And then this is, this new service would actually give us an ability to, you know, meet this huge amount of growth needs, have our month-to-month tracking on exactly where we are with each of the properties. I think that's kind of the way the contract structure is. It's about the total amount of assessed properties that we have and that they need to go through. So, you know, I feel much more confident with this contract role that clearly has a best-in-class service record here that, you know, will be able to have much more in-depth analysis of our month-to-month new valuation increases and other things as well.
So that head assessor would be from this organization, would come in and be maybe one day a week?
Correct. And that's Mark. Mark Carey?
Harry.
Perry, sorry. Perry is, would be the Ellsworth, be the Ellsworth's official city assessor.
And for the other days of the week when he's not here?
It would be our, the front office person for assessing. So that'd still be that service to be able to say, hey, this is what it is. We'll make an appointment with you and the assessor and be able to answer general questions as well. So, and that's the way it's worked with other cities and towns. And to me, this has a much higher degree of success under current budget constraints, even if it's actually a budget positive, knowing the success other cities and towns have been. Again, it's not an easy decision, but one that I think, now that I've seen it, could save the taxpayer money and increase services. That's why you outsource.
Any other question?
Yeah, a question. When you arrived at this contract proposal of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, was that looking at a one-year agreement? Is it multi-year?
It'd be a multi-year agreement, a three-year. It's actually averages out to about a hundred. I, I sent you all the, the full proposal, even talking to our legal counsel. It's, this would be, it's a proposal. And it's also important to note, this isn't like you guys approve this and then tomorrow, like, we move on this. This would be, you know, I'd talk about the proposal and the contract, one-thirty, you know, I think it was like one-twenty-five, one-thirty-five for the third year, so it's.
Okay, so you're looking at a three-year agreement?
Three-year, one-thirty. These are just rough numbers. And then I did the, the math on full benefits, you know, FICA, health insurance, salaries to arrive at the other current city assessor, current assisted assessor, current code enforcement assistant. Combine those, you know, drop those three to one, but with the outsource, which is a multi-person firm, you know, you get around about sixty-five thousand dollars a year in cost savings for the city. And because I mentioned in one of the finance committee meetings on this, like, this one's on me for year one, I really, I want to make sure our tax bills are out on June first and it's not something I take lightly and this is, not out June first, but we have our commitment prepared. Because there's another piece of this, too, which is, you know, we need, when it comes that late to the commitment and the rest is that, it, you know, you, you want a couple of weeks to really sit with that and to make sure there's no mistakes in anything and other pieces. And that's kind of one of the things we're going to in the city is, you know, we're putting out fire to fire to fire, looking a lot more ahead, trying to build best-in-class services and pieces in every single department of the organization. We've, we've come there in good ways. We've, you know, and whether we move forward with this in assessing, outsourcing or not, you know, that's, that doesn't mean I'm not going to try my darndest to get better. But to me, looking at the prospect of trying to wait till next budget cycle to hire another person a year or try to apply training resources or additional contracting resources that we never budgeted for, this gives us the ability to save money in year one, you know, get to that point. It will be a bit of a service change for our customers and, you know, we'll have a transition period. You know, I could see around January being the if that once approved to move forward with entering into a contract with these groups that we can come to terms. There's a couple of other smaller things that I'd like to negotiate in the contract just to get in there to assuage my, my personal needs for certitude and win the tax commitment, it's going to come out, how it's going to be organized, some of the data and presentations potentially before council and other things, I'd like to also see in there. But at this budget level, that it would be a cost savings and a service upgrade.
Any other questions from counselors? So as I understand it, we have kind of two, a two-step here, if we were to proceed. First is to potentially approve a contractor assessing proposal and then we would then have, I don't know if these conversations are kind of leading into each other, but we'd then have a potential action to appoint, for the appointment of a certified assessor from the contractor firm. So we've got to do a two-step here.
It's three-step, actually.
Three-step.
And this was in conversation with our, I don't know, Tim, if you want to come in here or not, but I'll, I'll just kind of give and Tim can say, yeah, this was, was one of my conversations with legal counsel is what is the process? I wish it was a one-step, but it's sort of a dissolution and the motions are in there of the assessing department. Sorry, I don't know, where am I? I think I tripled the motions in the memo.
Page ninety-three, the last page.
Yeah. So on, on twenty-two, it's discussion of potential act, motion to dissolve the city's assessing department upon, upon execution of contract with an assessing consultant and appointment of their contractor as a city assessor to satisfy state requirements. And then the next motion need to be to authorize city manager to enter into a contract with Downey Assessing Services with provision of assessing services in an amount not to exceed a hundred and forty thousand per year with funding come from the approved assessing department annual budget. And then a third motion to appoint Mark Perry as a certified assessor employed by Downey Assessing Services as Ellsworth's official assessor upon execution of the contract to the service provider. And this is a long way of saying that's how each step of the process goes per our charter, which our, our legal counsel looked into. We don't have clarity on if you outsource a piece of city government. That might be something we want to look into in the future is, you know, I hope not to outsource anything, but for myself or for any future version of, you know, we owe it to the taxpayers to get them the best service at the lowest possible cost in a way that's, you know, if there's multiple years of not doing that and there's an outsourcing option, that's, that's how it has to go.
Well, thanks for clarifying that. I think, I ask, too, because rather than doing three separate agenda items, I think maybe it just makes sense we have the full discussion and then we would vote on these three in order. So I do, I know there's folks here from the public may have comments, so at least.
Boyd Workin, resident. What happens to Larry?
I'm happy you heard all the comments before, but if we want to go back and forth on each one, but that's usually.
Yeah, we'll just take comments and then we can address them.
Okay, because he's been here for twenty-five years. I'm assuming he's going to be sticking around for like a couple of years to get everything turned over. That's all I'm saying.
Hi, I'm Ralph Jordan. I'm from the Bayside Road. Little history here. Before, I think with the exception of Steve, before you were all born or moved to this town. Thanks a lot. You remember this.
Yes, I'm sure you do, too.
We tried this. We tried this in the middle seventies. We hired an outside contractor to do the evaluation. Now, I live down Bayside Road. At the time, my father and my uncle owned seventy acres on the Union River. It was a bicentennial farm, I mean, it was over two-hundred years old. It was federally designated. It was on the tree growth. And this company came in, a local company, I mean, within thirty miles of here. And they flew over the town and they put it into grids and they said, we're going to tax you for seventy potential house lots because you've got seventy acres here. At the time, there was a man named Froggy Maddox that's set in this council longer than you people have been alive. And he got it turned around. But if he hadn't done that, we would have lost that land that's been in my family for two-hundred-and-fifty years. It's now the Jordan Family Preserve. Before you make this move, realize that probably twenty-five percent of the people in this town remember that because a lot of them were facing huge tax bills. Huge tax bills. Mr. Pierce, you said in a previous discussion they had about the cast property, you don't want to be in the business of taking people's home. If you do this, that's exactly the business you are going to be in. Exactly the business. And if you do this, the people of this town will remember.
Rebecca Maddox Wilber. My father was the counselor that he is speaking of. And that was nineteen-seventy-five, I believe. And my father was a telephone man that sat here with people of much higher financial stature and made decisions for the people of Ellsworth based on the majority best interests, not the minority, the entire time he served. It was the Sewell Company who did that valuation, which doubled and in some cases tripled people's valuations. And he had hundreds of people calling him, crying on the phone about the fact that they could barely pay their reasonable taxes and there was no way they were going to be able to maintain ownership of their home due to these new valuations. What he had to go through in that process was he connected with a woman named Mary Adams, who may or may not be alive. My father would be a hundred and six if he were alive. And they created the Land Owners Association through quite a process and were able to reverse the valuations and totally throw that out the window. But I'll tell you what, my father was a person I saw on the phone for months and he was traveling around, visiting people, collecting information, working with Mary Adams, and fought for, mind you, I think back then they got two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year for being accounts, which was a lot of money, right? He probably spent as much time on that as he did his job as a telephone man. I would not take this lightly. Local control is something that practically does not exist for anything that touches my life and taxes are my biggest concern. If I lived in Waltam, Eastbrook, Surrey, Lemoine, well, Lemoine, those parts of it are expensive, anywhere, my house, the taxes would be at least two-thousand dollars left. My taxes are ridiculous for what I have for a house, they just are. However, the valuation is reasonable. I have eighty-some acres, all except for the Beaver Dam. It's buildable. You give it to them, that'll be a million-dollar property. I lived through it. I watched my father fight for the people of Ellsworth to be able to keep their homes and it wasn't a few.
And that was to do it.
Yes. You need to take it very, very seriously. And I'll tell you what, I have talked to a lot of people and I posted about that article and the comments that I have and the information that I received about communities that people live in outside of here who had this done in recent years and what happened to them, it's the same thing as nineteen-seventy-five with the Sewell Company. Mark my words, do your research, because there's no turning back from that. And Larry Gardner, that's getting rid of somebody from the city of Ellsworth who's worked for twenty-five years. You can sell it any way you want, but taking people's jobs away to buy us trouble is not something I stand behind. And I am going to be vocal because I lost a lot of months of my father's presence fighting for the people of Ellsworth when this very thing happened. Please consider carefully.
Kristen Schleifer, four forty-eight North Street. I want to start by saying I'm rather indifferent about this, you know, as the big picture. However, listening to others, I think I had one of the most egregious property valuation increases at a hundred and one-point-seven percent this year. And it's causing like my mortgage company to want to force an immediate escrow analysis and all of these other things. It is literally going to increase my mortgage by several hundred dollars pretty immediately and I have had no recourse with the assessing department. And I have been beating the door down and it has not been working. I started September third, the day I saw my bill. Like, there has been a critical error here. I am waterfront. I own the worst piece of property on Graham Lake. I will argue anybody that it is the worst piece of property. I brought it, I bought it in two thousand seventeen, point-three acres for twenty-nine thousand dollars with well and septic because it's junk. There's no water there. So anyway, my, I provided Larry, when I finally got ahold of him after a month on October first, with an appraisal of two-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars that was performed in October of twenty-two. Right now, my valuation is still at three-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars. For those wondering if the valuations have not been equal across residents, I can promise you they haven't. I will share with you my microcosm that can prove this. I have a landlocked piece of land on Red Bridge Road that did not increase in value this year at all. It's the same as last year. My neighbor on Graham Lake, whose property is twice the size of mine, has a home and outbuildings on it, more waterfrontage, is assessed at fifty-two thousand dollars, minus three-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand. My building is a mobile home because I bought it out of poverty, one of my greatest accomplishments. And I'm afraid that I could lose it. I'm not elderly, I'm not whatever. I work forty hours a week. I have numerous side hustles, like, I'm trying to make do here and I get a freaking tax bill for forty-five hundred dollars on my mobile home. And I have no recourse. In my public sector job, I deal with property rebows. It's part of what I do. I deal with nine local towns in this region, from Rockland to Callis, and most of them are moving to outsourced. And the valuations are reasonable. That's what I've seen across the board. And there's an abatement process. If you don't like it, file an abatement, which is what I'm trying to do and getting nowhere. So that's all I have.
Thank you. I'll, I'll just mark public lines.
Stephen Shea. I live in Park Street in Ellsworth. I was on the same council.
I was on the same council. Rebecca's father was on in 1975 and I remember that fiasco. But can I ask you a question, Charlie? You said other towns locally use the same firm? But you didn't tell us who.
I, I, I'm sorry, but Orano and Belfast.
Orano and Belfast. Thank you. Have you talked to them?
Yes.
And have they, how long have they used?
It's, I'll, I'll go back to the previous with, you know, please make your comments and then I'll, I'll address all of them at the end here. That's what I did for the other citizens, so.
But I guess it's late, so I don't want to spend a lot of our time tonight. But I, I think you're a lame duck council and to make this important decision, I think you ought to hold off and do some more research, get some more public comment. I only found out about this. I don't know how long you've been talking about this, but I only found out about it when I read the council agenda. And I don't think people in town are aware of this. And I would wait and get more public input and do a little more thinking about this. This is a very, very serious undertaking. And I would put it on hold, do some more research, get some more public comment before you make any decision. I wouldn't do it tonight. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Luna Pender. I'm the Assistant Assessor for the City of Ellsworth. I've had the privilege of working with Larry for about six months now. And I am about halfway through my CMA training, which is the Certified Main Assessors. I take that test in June, hopefully with great marks. So I just wanted to come up and provide the council and also hopefully the public here and people watching at home, hopefully, some clarifications as to, I think that just the miscommunication of the talked-about inequality of taxes being raised in some properties versus not. I can't speak to yours because I do genuinely think Larry has yours in his pile. There is an error in yours, so yours is unfortunately a little bit of a special situation.
Yeah, and then he means I worry just a little block, 600 bucks. So, like, I, I express that.
Sorry, we can't talk about individual.
Exactly. So like it is, there are specific outliers that are very special situations and I can't speak to those. However, across the board, I did just want to read to you an email that we have been sending out to the public. And it describes very well a lot of your questions that you had earlier that you might not be aware of because you're just not in the field of assessing. It is a certified field that Larry has 25 years experience, plus experience in because he's only been working here for 25 years. He's been assessing before that. So I did just want to read that to you so that it is clear for all. I'm sorry I had it up, but we've been here for so long it timed out. So this is, every day, I can say with confidence, I get about anywhere from 10 to 15 property owners either calling in or personally stopping in to speak about their increase in their tax bill. Most of the time, I'd say probably 98% of the time, it's waterfront owners because they saw an over-the-board, on average, 30% increase in their bills versus the standard, about 8 to 10% for the non-waterfront properties, which is a big difference. If you're a waterfront owner, you obviously would want to know why. So, in response to that, the recent increase to waterfront property values were based on a variety of complex factors considered during the assessment calculation process. Meaning it's not just an individual, "I built a home" or "I built add a new garage." It also takes into effect grouped, liked homes. So that means all of waterfront property, not just ones on Green Lake or Branch Lake. It's all throughout Ellsworth properties. Over time, market fluctuations can create significant disparities in property values, prompting the need for assessment reevaluations. That is what we have here. And I can tell you exactly what that stems from.
I'm just gonna, we're a little off-base as far as the issue that's before us.
Well, that's.
I appreciate the.
Do, I mean, you're, and from what I've interpreted about the agenda anyway, is that you are having a discussion on whether or not to decide to dissolve the entire assessing department and to outsource this work to a consultant.
Correct.
This is specifically the reason of why it was brought up, not just this reason.
Yeah, there's a lot of reasons.
Why it was brought up to actually make that decision and move forward.
I, I understand that. There's a lot of reasons though. And I think going into analysis of what, you know, that assessing process.
Yeah, and I'm happy to do, we'll do, we'll do a, we'll do a public release on this, moving forward on, to kind of the email you've put out there. I've put out some things in the past. I know we also have a memo to council on kind of the valuation changes.
Okay, I can keep it to just the consulting-based questions. When it comes to moving into a consultant and dissolving the department, there are logistical things that I am concerned about working in the department. For example, as I mentioned, there's about 10 to 15 walk-ins and calls a day just on that one subject. The amount of volume for taxpayers coming in with inquiries and things that need to be done that are specific to a trained professional. And as I said, I'm, I'm there, but I'm not all the way there yet. I'd probably say around 40% of those questions I am not able to answer. And that is unfortunately something Larry would have to answer as the assessor. There is no feasible way right now, as the RFP stands, with a 16- to 20-hour-a-month requirement, which comes out to about four hours a week. There's no way that that is feasible for the taxpayers to come in because that means that there's going to be two things. There's a lot of onsite work that is.
You know, I hate to cut off here, but this is comments on a proposal, not the contract. If we could, if we could bring this offline, you know, I've got a few edits here that I, you know, we need to leave this for the Ellsworth citizens here. And Luna, you and I could discuss this in more depth a little later on. But there's a few things that are edits that I'd like to, you know, to bring offline.
So you're not going to decide on dissolving the department today?
No, as, and again, we had some discussions. But no, as, as stated in this meeting and as previous discussions that I've had, there's no change now whatsoever. That we'd be looking into the contractor potentially January. It could be a timeframe. It could be even later. That could not happen at all. I could not move forward with this contractor at all. We could stay with the status quo if I decide that I don't come to terms for agreement on this piece. So.
So I guess that's what I'm asking now is what are you specifically deciding right now?
And again, with, with our staff, we'll have a further discussion on that. I've already had a few discussions. The discussion is to, on the pawn execution of this contract, that the assessing part probably would be dissolved. And we'd move forward. Again, this is a difficult decision. I think all the councils here can relate on, I think, multiple years of tax bills not being handled. I'll start addressing all the other questions moving forward. And Tim, I'd love you to maybe come up and talk about kind of the order of operations here as well. But the, you know, the, the plain fact, and I didn't, I don't want to have to be here today talking about this. But the citizens of Ellsworth have had their tax bills delayed for multiple years, four or five years now from coming out. And, you know, there's, there's clearly, it's talked about today, some backlogs, some information that needs to be provided faster. I want to work on a transition process. It's outlined in this memo, is outlined in further agreements so that we can get a best-in-class assessing department here in the city of Ellsworth. I can have further updates at finance committee meetings moving forward on how this process will work. I'd say in terms of what's happening with staff, and that's the other piece, is, you know, those are internal staff discussions. I'm not, I wouldn't say anything about our, our current staff. You know, that's, those are personnel discussions. And this is about the assessing function. And we've talked a lot about that externally. And is there a contractor working with an in-person staff member who's here full-time with the city, still managing that contractor? That assessor would be here on multiple days a week. And we won't have a backlog of outstanding questions that are coming and haven't been answered. We won't have citizen, you know, confusion about how the assessment was made, when it was made. We're going to be going to a modern assessing service that many other cities and towns get here and I think are, are very, very important. So, that's the task at hand. And I'll just send it over to Tim Pease to talk about the order here.
Good evening. Tim Pease, again, city attorney. I had conversations with the manager earlier about.
Chairman, I would like to speak.
Well, well, our attorney's speaking right now, Ray, so I just, you wait at least for him to finish.
I have some things that I want to speak on that I think he might.
I'm fine to have Ray.
No, no, let him go. Let him go. Let him go.
So, the, the manager is correct in terms of the sequence of events. What I wanted to make sure is that there isn't anything inconsistent in the charter that would say that you couldn't outsource the assessing function. And I've looked at the entire charter. It's getting a lot of work out tonight, my version is anyway. And Article 6, I think, allows this particular thing, whether it's a good idea or a bad idea, that's your choice. But it is, it's up to the council to decide this.
Ray, would you like to come speak?
Raymond Williams, 56 Hancock Street. I first noticed this on the second, when the request for proposals appeared on the city website. And so, and I wondered what was going on. And then I went through it and the next thing that appeared was, a week later, on October 9th, there was an addendum number one, which basically made two corrections on two things in the, in the request for proposal, correcting stating that the city uses Trio for tax billing and collection in two different places in it. And, and not Munis as stated in the RFP. And the second statement was in another section, "The city of Ellsworth does not currently use Munis. We use Trio software for tax billing and collection." Now, I don't know who prepared this RFP, but that is a mistake that never should have been in the RFP. The city hasn't used Munis since sometime in the last fiscal year. And that should not have been there. Whoever made that mistake should suffer the consequences. It was not needed. Also, there was a question in the addendum that probably came from maybe the ultimate successful person or maybe from some other thing. It's my impression that there were some inquiries from two other people that ultimately did not submit proposals. But it said, "Is this a supporting role for the current assessing department of being the actual assessing department for the town?" That was the question. "The intent is for this contact to replace lead assessor role. However, there will be full-time staff in the assessors' office for day-to-day inquiries and other tasks as needed." And that was entirely, question was entirely, which one of the previous speakers tonight had mentioned, that, that onsite availability requirement of the person who was hired under the, to submit a request for proposal, maintain a regular present at Ellsworth City Hall. And this is for approximately 16 to 20 hours per month. So, you know, what, what is going to be required here? Now, subsequently, I inquired today if I could see a copy of the proposal that was filed in response to this request by, I'm assuming it was filed by, let me see, in the memo which the manager sent as part of the package, Down East Assessing, I think he's referred to as. And I believe that the correct name is Down East Assessing and Real Estate Services LLC, who also has another company, Down East Revaluation Services, and also the principal, principal Mark Perry is also the owner and designated broker of Scudic Realty. So I don't know what he devotes most of his time to. My question basically that I think is very important, is this, is, does he have the capability of doing this? How many, how many registered main assessors does he have on his staff? How many is, what is the remaining of his other staff? These are things that I think you have to make and know and make your decision. And maybe he answers some of these in the proposal that he submitted, which I have not had an opportunity to see. And I hope you, you have, and hopefully it may answer some of these questions. But I think that you've got basically before you did, oh, and then the next thing is, I think we've got a real issue as to, as to what can be done, whether this can be done. And Section 603 of the city charter says the council will annually, annually, appoint following-appointed administrative officials. And this is the appointment made by the council. And the council has been doing this, it usually, at the, at the end of the fiscal year, for the start of the next fiscal year, July 1st, or if not, do it then, they do it in the July meeting. And these appointments, the appointed administrative officials, the first listed is the assessor. And then there is the sentence following that in A, "The assessor may not be removed from office based on disagreement with respect to assessing practice employed by the assessor where such practice is generally accepted and lawful." And I think that is something that the members of the council should take and consider, that statement. Just why is this proposal coming up? And the other, other officials that the council makes the appointment of in the, is the city clerk, treasurer, tax collector, and agent to the overseas. And I take the view there's a separate assessing department. There is also, Chapter 30 of the city ordinances.
Hey, Ray, I'm going to ask you to, I think we've, it's 11:10. Aye. And I think at this point, I'm going to suggest that we table this issue and not vote on it tonight. Would be my, my advice to the council. We've heard a lot of concerns either way. We have also, you know, the indication I'm getting from the community is they want to spend more time getting their heads wrapped around this. I think ultimately, you know, we, this, you know, may still be the way we move forward. But at the same time, there's a lot of questions here. People want to know more information. I don't want to, and I want to honor that. And I appreciate everyone's, you know, comments here tonight. I also want to note though that city manager Pierce has been working very hard on this issue for a long time. As he said, he wants to improve the, the assessing functions of the city, reduce our costs. There's only noble intentions here, good intentions. It's obviously a complicated issue. But as you've heard here tonight, people are upset about how the assessment has gone. And, but then we're told that people also don't want us to, you know, pursue a different path. So damned if you do, damned if you don't when it comes to taxes. But what I'll say is, I think we've had, you know, a lot of public comment. We've had, you know, I, I need to bring it back to the council to see if, you know, maybe I'm off-base and they all want to vote on it tonight. But I think, Ray, I appreciate your comments, but we're running very late. You've been much more than three minutes, which we typically keep public comments to. You did provide comments at the finance committee, so I appreciate that as well. So I'm going to move this to discussion with the council. And thank you, Ray, for your comments tonight.
I, I, I thank you. And I think your suggestion is the. I, I thank you, and I think your suggestion is the correct suggestion at this time, because, I was gonna get into talking about the three suggested motions, but they, you're not ready to handle those motions tonight, and if you do, it would be, if it came out any result other than no on them, it would be an abomination.
Thank you, Ray. So with that...
There's another public comment.
I think I'm going to, it's already 11:15, I think I'd like to hear if the council would like to table it, then we can...
This doesn't have a public hearing on it.
This isn't a public hearing either, so, I do appreciate it. What we're trying to do is provide more time for comments by tabling it, so I just wanna note that, and we'll...
Yeah, this is a comment.
We're going to advance this to the council. I'd like to see if there's anyone on the council would like to make a motion to table.
Yeah, usually when we see this much conversation and liveliness, it means we gotta reconsider, we gotta think about this. Obviously, there's a dark history here, still fresh in a lot of folks' minds, right? Also, there's a lot of expertise and training involved in the assessing department, which means, like so many things within the city, it's complex and not everybody understands it. A lot of counselors up here, me included, don't have a great notion of how assessing works in general, so there's that component of it, you know, I would look for more information, and I would move to table, unless anybody else wants to say anything first.
I'd just say I'm disappointed that we're not hearing from everybody that wants to talk in this room.
Yeah, you can set me in three hours, four hours, you should be allowed to speak.
Has he spoken already?
Nope.
That's fine. Again, I'm not trying to, you know, limit public comment, it's 11:15, and we're saying we're going to table this to have further discussion.
Roger Gilli, resident of Ellsworth. I went to, to meet the candidates, listened to that. We talked about taxes a lot, about money. There was comments about, well, maybe we figure out how the outer staters are gonna pay, whether it's, we charge more for the motel rooms, this, that, whatever. My, my theory is, if we become more business-friendly, you know, we got a business coming into town, they wanna build the big building, it's $300, $350,000 they gotta spend before they can build their building. The more that we let in, the more taxes that we make, the less that us as residents have to pay, 'cause they'll kinda wash everything out. When I was growing up, the Ames parking lot, you know, back in the day, every store was full, they stayed open fairly late. Now the building's fallen down, and there's nobody in it. So I, I guess, you know, if Ellsworth was a little more business-friendly, and willing to work with some of these businesses, I feel that, you know, we would bring some revenue to the town, but nobody wants to come here if they gotta, you know, spend all kinds of money like that to, to live here. I mean, I paid three different, three different taxes in Ellsworth, my home taxes went up too, my mortgage payment every month's more. So that's what I'd just like to say, is, you know, and, and, you know, maybe not scold other counselors while you're here, you know, keep it to what we need to hear, our taxes. And, you know, the other thing I'd like to say is, you know, we talked about buying a sideways, a sidewalk plow. You know, my dad hasn't done it for a long time, you know, 'cause he's passed away now, but for 15 years, he plowed the sidewalk with a John Deere tractor that was two-wheel drive, never had any problem, same tractor for like 15 years. I, I guess I don't understand why we, we need what we need, we already got two machines. If they can't maintain them, maybe we find somebody else to be able to run them. That's it.
How would the council like to proceed?
Chair moves to table.
Second.
All in favor? I think that tables 22, 23, and 24, bringing us to amend 25 on the agenda, executive session to discuss personnel matters in accordance with MRS Title I, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6A. We need a motion to go into executive session.
Good luck. So moved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? We are now proceeding to executive session. Public...